Start our meeting, the city council just met on one closed session item and there's nothing to report out at this time. So, good evening everyone and thank you for joining us for our January 20th regular meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as teleconference in response to the local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We want to encourage everyone to keep up the efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19 in Arcata. We know that by wearing masks and practicing social distancing, we can reduce the spike and keep our businesses open. So please support safe shopping by masking up in Arcata. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you are logged onto the Zoom meeting webinar, click on Raise Your Hand on the right side of your screen. When it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, the clerk will unmute you. You will then have two minutes to comment. You can also access this meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine on your phone. This will raise your hand. When it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate that your phone is unmuted and then you will have two minutes to comment. And now, if you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Pereira?
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar? Councilmember Goldstein?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
All present.
Great, now we will move on to ceremonial matters. We have a proclamation recognizing January 2021 as National Mentoring Month. Whereas this year, Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast celebrates 51 years of service to the youth in Humboldt County. Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast recognizes that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. Whereas a mentor is a caring, consistent presence who devotes time to help a young person develop personal strength and achievement and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. Quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes January 2021 as National Mentoring Month and thanks all of our local heroes who participate in quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with the tools to lead healthy and productive lives. The city council also calls on residents to help close the gap between the availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who would love to spend time with a big brother or big sister. Signed today by myself and we will hopefully get a copy over to Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast. So, thank you. Next, we have on our agenda for ceremonial matters, a certificate of appreciation for Stan Schaefer for his 24 years of service to the city of Arcata. Whereas the city of Arcata hired Stan Schaefer as a maintenance worker in 1997, promoted to senior maintenance worker in 2001, further promoted to maintenance crew leader in 2015, and finally promoted to Parks Facilities and Natural Resources Supervisor in 2018. And whereas Stan worked diligently to care for and improve all of Arcata's many buildings, including City Hall, the Arcata Community Center, D Street Neighborhood Center, the Intermodal Transit Facility, Arcata Marsh Interpretive Center, Redwood Lodge and Lounge, Judo Hut and the Library, as well as the city's 29 neighborhood, community and linear parks, open spaces, and special use areas. And whereas Stan exemplified excellent leadership and reliability with a resilient can-do attitude and an admirable ability and willingness to accomplish the tasks at hand with a dedication to city parks and facilities that has greatly enhanced the quality of life in Arcata. And whereas Stan always brought a high level of care and passion for those around him and for the work he is dedicated towards. And whereas Stan's range of duties demanded and divided his attention in many directions, but he could always be counted on to calmly and efficiently respond to and resolve whatever situation arose. As a quick-thinking problem solver and multitasker, he was adept at serving the myriad of needs that his colleagues, collaborators, and the community required of his position. And whereas Stan's coworkers regarded him as a considerate, attentive communicator with a friendly smile and a good sense of humor. And whereas the city and the community have greatly benefited from Stan's commitment and service to the city with yet another mighty fine job. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Arcata hereby expresses its appreciation to Stan Schaefer for serving the people of Arcata for 24 years. We wish him all the best and commemorate his retirement on December 30th, 2020. Signed today by myself and I didn't know if there was any, if Stan was here for any comments or anything from staff.
We did not get Stan logged on quick enough, so. We'll keep moving. We've got Dobie and Mark are both here, so we'll get to them when you get there.
Okay, okay.
Continue. Thank you, Stan.
Okay. Next, we have a certificate of appreciation for Marc Andre for his 37 years of service to the city of Arcata. Whereas the city of Arcata hired Marc Andre in 1984 as a part-time forest technician, later to be promoted in 1986 to Forest Resource Specialist, in 1991 to the Forest GIS Coordinator, the Deputy Environmental Services Director in 1992, and finally promoted into his longstanding role of Environmental Services Director in 2006. Over the years, Marc's dedication to the city's forests and natural spaces has greatly enhanced the quality of life in Arcata. And whereas Marc's environmental leadership has led the way for many legacy projects, including the Arcata Ridge Trail, the McDaniel Slough Restoration, adding 75 acres back to the Humboldt Arcata Bay, the Baylands Restoration and Enhancement Project, which acquired 217 acres along North Humboldt Bay, the Alder Grove Marsh, Multiple Creek and Stream Daylighting and Enhancement Projects, and Arcata's portion of the California Coastal Trail. And whereas, under Marc's tenure and restoration forestry skills, the Arcata Community Forest has fully recovered from past management practices, resulting in a model that other local and international communities are using as an example for their community-based forests. And whereas Marc's persistent vision for the future provided Arcata with an early start to digitizing city maps and developing a tremendous GIS resource. This vision also allowed Arcata to capitalize on early air carbon credit markets, which resulted in the finance director at the time asking him during budget revenue development if he would be selling any more of that air that year. And whereas Marc's patient, good-natured leadership made him well-suited to serve as the director of the largest department in the city, as did his impressive ability to keep an assortment of plate spinning simultaneously. And whereas, through his dedicated work ethic, astute management of manifold projects and programs, and evident respect and appreciation for his staff, Marc promoted a culture of teamwork and cultivated excellence within his department. And whereas Marc's environmentally conscious management spanned well beyond the forest with focused efforts to restore creeks, wetlands, and baylands, conserve and protect wildlife habitat, reduce stormwater pollution, promote energy conservation to reduce greenhouse gases, and divert and reduce the amount of waste sent to landfills. And whereas Marc has served, long-served the best interests of the city, its residents and visitors, infrastructure, open spaces, waterways, and of course, forests with shrewdness, devotion, and ingenuity. The fruits of his service will be enjoyed for many generations to come. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Arcata hereby expresses its appreciation to Marc Andre for serving the people of Arcata for 37 years. We wish him all the best and commemorate his retirement on December 30th, 2020.
I don't know if Marc will be able to unmute himself. It sounds like he's sort of coming in. He's already helping out CalRecycle and CalFire on a project in Santa Cruz, it sounds like. He said it was a little spotty.
Yeah.
So you are definitely freezing up, Marc, but it might be a fitting technological end.
Well, I will. Oh, you said the magic words. You said Arcata.
I think we can hear you now, Marc.
Okay.
Oh.
Until you talk, then you're freezing. It's all good. All right. Thank you, Marc.
Thank you, Marc.
I even. I even.
It's just not working out, Marc. I'm sorry.
Okay, I even paid an extra $10 for the faster internet.
Well, who knows how bad it would have been if you didn't pay the $10.
Right, at least we got to see you. We'll see you soon.
Yeah, thanks, Marc. Okay, next we will, we have a certificate.
Oh, you heard that part. Okay.
Well, now we're going to do a certificate of appreciation for Dobie Class for his 22 years of service to the city of Arcata. We're at.
I'm working on it.
Sorry, Marc. It's Dobie's time now. Okay, certificate of appreciation for Dobie Class for his 22 years of service to the city of Arcata. Whereas the city of Arcata hired Dobie Class in 1999 as the Assistant City Engineer and Deputy Director for Public Works, later to be promoted in 2002 to the Director of Public Works, shifting to the City Engineer position in 2015 with his final position as a Special Projects Engineer focusing on the Water-Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Project in 2019. Over the years, Dobie brought practicality, dexterous problem-solving ingumption to his work as a public servant. And whereas Dobie's vision for building outside of the box brought innovations to Arcata such as roundabouts, speed humps, bumps and lumps, yes, they are different, whooners and bicycle boulevards, all while caring deeply about alternative transportation, environmental and social justice, and the health benefits of pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And whereas Dobie never let engineering limitations stop a project and should be acknowledged for his role in many large accomplishments, including the Foster Avenue Expansion, McDaniel Slough Restoration, many miles of trails and bike lanes, formulating the city's first capital improvement plan, over a dozen park renovations, and the procurement of new water tanks, all while graciously taking on new tasks and learning a variety of trades, from code enforcement to transit to building inspection and high-power electrical wiring, all to keep the city running smoothly and within budget. And whereas Dobie was instrumental in receiving and implementing a variety of state and federal grants for various city infrastructure improvement projects, helping Arcata to achieve the status of a bicycle-friendly and pedestrian-friendly city. He also served on the Technical Advisory Committee for the Humboldt County Association of Governments, where he helped to funnel money to Arcata for transit and street infrastructure projects while developing annual county-wide projects that greatly benefited the various cities and agencies involved. Whereas Dobie also saved the city money by driving a city truck and trailer all the way to Portland, Oregon to pick up the infamous Portland Lou, taking great strides to ensure that it made it safely to its new forever home. Even more impressively, according to the Mad River Union article from April 1st, 2015, Dobie was able to secure an unprecedented $63 billion award to construct a large Hadron Collider at the Bicycle Hub at the intersection of 10th and I Streets. And whereas Dobie had a personal relationship with the one and only Santa Claus, somehow always able to convince him to make an appearance at the annual city employee holiday party, bringing joy and laughter to all in attendance. And whereas with his friendly demeanor and contagious sense of humor, Dobie is also energetic, passionate, and quite literal. Once, when asked by a colleague to run five blocks to the store to grab some batteries, he did just that and returned shortly thereafter huffing and puffing from his adventurous spirit. And whereas, no matter how stormy the seas, Dobie always had the confidence and nerve to do what it took to right the ship, bolstered by his determination and indomitable spirit. Arcata has greatly benefited because of Dobie's continued commitment and service to the city with his institutional knowledge that is an institution in and of itself, and he will be greatly missed. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Arcata hereby expresses its appreciation to Dobie Class for serving the people of Arcata for 22 years and wish him all the best and commemorate his retirement on December 30th, 2020. Do we have Dobie?
Dobie, can you unmute yourself?
I'm trying.
You did it.
Let's see, hang on, integrated. There we go.
You're good.
You know what? It doesn't work apparently.
It does. You're loud and clear here.
Good, okay. Well, all I can say is, thank you. It's been an absolute honor and a pleasure to work with all the staff of the city. It was my dream to come and work at the city from the time I went to Humboldt State. And all I can say is, I look forward to continuing to serve in all kinds of capacities. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to die here. So you'll be seeing me for plenty more years because I want to see what sea level looks like in 2050. So, thanks again. Congratulations to all you new council members. I hope you have a blast. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Dobie.
Thanks, Dobie. Okay. Well, now we will move on to reports by commissioner committee. We have our 2020 Annual Report of the City of Arcata Planning Commission, and we have our chair, Dan Tacney.
Yep, we are just bringing Dan in now. He should be able to unmute himself in just a second. Perfect. Hi, Dan.
Hi, are we good to go?
You are good to go.
Okay, I didn't realize we were losing such amazing staff members. I hope there's good people and I imagine there are to fill their shoes. Hello, new city council. I am looking forward to meeting a couple of you. I know Sarah from many years back, but I haven't met Stacy or Emily. Is David Lawyer here somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, so I think you probably have a copy of what's in front of me. The planning commission goals for 2020, 2021. They're virtually the same. And, you know, we can talk about them in detail, although I'll need staff contribution on that. You know, they write the reports, we respond to them. And they have the background on all this, but I think the couple of things that are going to come up time and again, that we've spent a lot of time on our, to finalize the local coastal program. We've been working on that a lot lately. And it feels like the horizon is coming on that one. And then also the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan feels like a big one that we're going to keep dealing with and that you all are going to have to respond to. There's so much about infill. I know we talked about it a fair amount at last year's report from the commission. It feels a little bit like the elephant in the room aside from climate change and sea level rise. But, you know, our first big infill development project is going on south of Co-op there. I'm sure you've all have seen it. And that location to me felt like, if not here, where? Although we still got a fair amount of neighborhood pushback. And that model feels like something that's going to repeat itself. So I don't know if they'll be sprinkled around the Arcata Gateway Project or where future projects might get targeted, but it feels like something we're going to be revisiting with state incentives in mind and all the transportation connectivity and, you know, wonderful assets that seem to go along with those projects. So I think beyond that, another thing that I just want to touch base on briefly, it's something that's been on the list for a couple of years and it has been on the back burner for a few years within the city is this historic preservation and getting the Arcata Plaza designated a historic landmark. It's, I was part of that project from the beginning in another capacity. And everybody that we asked about Plaza's historic designation said, oh, it's a historic landmark. Of course it is. And as we all looked into it, we realized that it really isn't at the state level or the national historic landmark level. And if we fulfill that project, there's a potential really nice brown sign that we could have along the highway that says Arcata Plaza Historic Landmark. And I think that's the kind of thing that pulls good people off the highway to come visit our town. And there's very few towns, as we all know, up and down the state that have such a charming town center. And it always feels like what a shame to drive through Arcata and not get off the highway and realize what our downtown looks like. So hopefully that project will be crossing all of your plates before too long. There's some more homework to do. A lot has been done and we just need to fulfill that one. Are there questions or comments that I may or may not be able to answer?
Thanks, Dan. I'll ask for questions from the council, starting with councilmember Goldstein.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No questions at this time. Thanks, Stan. Good to see you.
Yep, you too.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Um, no questions, but nice to meet you and thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Watson?
I don't have any questions. Really appreciate all the work that the commission does. Thank you.
And yeah, I don't have any questions, so thank you.
Okay. I appreciate the work that you all do. I know a lot of the stuff that goes through us ends up in your docket and that you have to study all the same material. So I have a sense of that that's only one small part of your project, being on city council and how much work it is. So, thank you for responding to these projects and seeing them through at the other end. And I look forward to meeting the rest of you in person and we'll talk soon.
Great, thanks, Dan.
You're welcome. Good night.
Do we have any members of the public wanting to comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, next we will move to early oral communications. This 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda this evening. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. Do we have anyone that'd like to make a comment for early oral communications?
We do not have any indication of public comment at this time.
Okay. Let's see, next we have our consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. And now I will go through and read the consent calendar. A, approve the city council minutes of January 6th, 2021. B, bi-weekly report on general warrants. C, adopt ordinance number 1540, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, or excuse, of the city council of the city of Arcata amending zoning regulations pertaining to city-initiated land use development projects in the Cannabis Innovation Zone, Combining Zone. Wave reading of the text and consent to read by title only. Is there any member of the council that would like to pull an item?
I'd like to pull item C.
C? Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Is there anything that needs to get pulled by staff? And any members of the public that would like to pull an item for separate discussion?
No members of the public.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I miss item C. You want to do that and also say without item C?
Oh, sorry. Okay, I moved to approve the consent calendar without item C.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll. Let's see, councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Hi.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Hi.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Hi.
I vote I as well. Motion passes and now we'll move to item C. And councilmember Goldstein, I'll turn over to you.
Thanks. Um, I know we talked about this at our last meeting, but it's kind of just been eating at the back of my brain, wanting to, I just wanted to revisit the number of permits that we were going to allow. We had talked about going from 20 to 30 as the cap. And the more I thought about it last week, the more it started to feel like a pretty large step. And we had talked a little bit about maybe finding a middle ground at 25. And so I just was hoping we could revisit that briefly and talk about that number.
Great, thank you. I guess we can do a roll call for any comments or questions from the council and then turn it over to staff. Let's see. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I just want to comment because I believe the reason that we decided to end up going with 30 was the fact that the process of re-upping it again, once maybe it hits 25, that already, that number that it's already close to, I believe we said there's currently 17 or 18. Forgive me if I'm wrong. I don't remember the exact number. But again, then having to go through this process and having to go through, you know, drawing up another ordinance and all of the work that the planning commission has done on this, that it's kind of, you know, makes sense to make it 30, so there is some wiggle room in there. So we're not constantly revisiting and renewing the subject, I believe is what we spoke about last time. So I just wanted to say that I'm still on the side of, you know, keeping with, streamlining it for our staff and not having to revisit this issue multiple times. And I think upping it to 30 is what makes the most sense at this time.
Okay, councilmember Atkins Salazar?
I'm also fine with upping it to 30 if that's the recommendation of staff. We were not even at 20 yet, so it's not like there's people clamoring to get in there. So I think it'll, you know, we have quite a bit of time to fill those slots, but I'm fine with going to 30.
Okay, Vice Mayor Watson?
Yeah, my preference would still be, like I mentioned last time, to just go with the 25. You know, I just don't. Yeah, I just feel like it's a safer number and it sounds nice just to say we can just do a moratorium. But, I mean, everything costs money. Everything has to come back to us in some form and everything's going to take staff time. And, you know, again, deciding, trying to keep it diverse area or, yeah, trying to help other businesses that might want to operate in that area. So, yeah, you know, to me, I'm still in favor of 25.
My thought is, I agree with councilmember Schaefer and Atkins Salazar. I understand the perspective of Vice Mayor Watson and councilmember Goldstein that you raised. I think it's a, those are valid points, but I do feel like we do have the tools of, if there does seem to be some alarming speed that we're filling up these positions, we can evoke a moratorium, an emergency moratorium where we can act quickly. And I think given that we're not coming close to that, I think this is a prudent path. So at this point, I don't know if there's any comments from staff?
I think this is really, you know, the number to limit it is really a policy decision that, you know, the council is fully, you know, it's fully within their purview to make. So I don't think we have a strong recommendation from staff, 25 or 30.
Well, I guess at this point, I'll entertain a motion, whatever that motion is, and we can go from there.
Can I please ask another question?
Absolutely.
What's the, could you just outline the moratorium process and how how quickly that is to implement?
Sure. Nancy, do you want to handle that one?
Yes, sure. I'm happy to. There is 10 day public notice that's required. And the council has to make findings that the moratorium is needed to preserve the status quo while the the city is evaluating appropriate planning standards because something has changed, like there's legislative legislation that has changed or circumstances have changed. And and so I suppose the circumstance that might happen is that suddenly the economy booms. And we need to refocus. So on 10 days' notice, then the council can take up the urgency ordinance and that is a different type of urgency ordinance than the one that we've been using during pandemics, but because this then sunsets on its own time limit that the council chooses. It can go for 22 days. Or it can go for up to two years if the council has a subsequent meeting. So that's the the rough process in outline form. It can be done relatively quickly. 10 days does often extend things a little longer and then and then having staff prepare the the ordinance.
The other thing to keep in mind with that timeframe, too, is that the the cap is not, you know, these aren't over the counter permits where someone can just come in and say, okay, I'm going to pay my fee and get the permit. They're use permits that require the, you know, public hearing process and the planning commission to to take formal action. And so you know, I do think it's wise to, you know, set the policy based on, you know, the, you know, to ground that in, you know, as much information as we have about you know, what a full build out would look like. And I think we had evaluated everything from you know, from having no limit, no cap, to having no use permit process to treat them, you know, similar to other businesses. And that is part of the discussion the planning commission had. And ultimately, I think that they had made some recommendations to, you know, loosen the restrictions even more than what was originally envisioned. And then ultimately, the planning, sorry, the city council set the policy tone by saying we wanted to have a cap still and we wanted that to be 30. But certainly, you know, 30 or 25 is, you know, I think to Councilmember Watson's point, if we have to go through a process to, you know, reverse a decision one way or the other. You know, it's it's certainly it's it's time and energy of staff, but that's the, you know, council's purview.
And then I just want to correct myself. I said the first round on the ordinance was 20 days, 45 days. I'm not sure why I said 20. Some noticing section. This is 10 days' notice, 45 days, but it's down and then it to a total.
And then I just wondered to, it just seems like if, yeah, I mean, I don't know what that situation would look like. We're getting close to the cap and we decided we want to do a moratorium and it sounds like there's a 10 day window there where somebody could at least submit an application, whether or not it's processed or not. And I don't know, it kind of, it also kind of seems like it just leaves, it opens up the possibility of litigation if we're trying to do a moratorium. And, you know, we have applicants that aren't that are feeling like they're not going to get their permits through.
Can I, I have another question. If let's say that we did go up to 30 permits, what is the capacity in that area for all businesses? Like, would 30 mean that no new businesses could go in there? Or is there still room for other businesses? Because I think that's the concern that we just want to make sure that it's available to diverse businesses? So just someone have information on that?
Yeah, I don't have available, excuse me, at my fingertips right now, the the information that we had presented earlier on. But the generally speaking, there, you know, there is a diversity of businesses in the area. There's absolutely no question that in particular early when we adopted the cannabis innovation zone that there were you know, pretty, pretty broad speculation on properties. Rents went up, prices of land went up ridiculously. And and certainly some of the businesses that were operating there, you know, chose to to leave. Some businesses were, you know, their leases weren't renewed because the landowners knew that there would be you know, additional rents that could come from the cannabis industry that they weren't going to garner from, you know, whatever industry was, you know, operating on the site. And then in addition, we had some folks who were able to, you know, leverage this for you know, sort of the retirement plan. They cashed out of their property for someone who was interested in purchasing it, converting that property to cannabis. So we lost some businesses that, you know, potentially we would have lost through retirement anyway. So it's kind of all over the map, but there's there's definitely, you know, a pretty broad range, diversity of businesses out there. You know, on the flip side, I guess I would say, and I think I presented this information at the last hearing on this matter as well, that that we may be near, at least for current market conditions, sort of the the market, the the natural market limit. We had a lot of use permits early, then it tapered off for a while and there was another push. And now we are up to to 17 permits, I believe. And and those, you know, those, those were, we haven't seen a lot of interest since that 17th permit application came in for new use permits, new use permits in zone two. Now, in area one, use permit isn't required unless you're doing a particular activity that requires a use permit. And so, you know, this is a situation likely if there was market pressure to drive new businesses, they would likely just end up operating in area one. We've seen a lot more interest in area one, which is where we wanted to drive the business with the policy decisions we made early on anyway. And so, you know, I think there is, you know, good support for making either, you know, either decision. And again, the reason why staff came back with a recommendation of 30 in this ordinance was because that was the direction we received. And so we'll, you know, certainly open to, you know, reopening it. I think from my professional opinion, we're not at a we're not at a critical path for either policy decision. So I don't have a real strong recommendation one way or the other.
In terms of numbers, just looking at the map, which is on page 31 of your packet for this meeting. And I'm going to give an estimate of numbers, but it looks like based on that map, there was about 105 parcels of which approximately 20 of them would have been in zone one and so excluded from the cap. So you're probably right around 85 parcels total of which you would be capping this at either 25 or 30 of those, leaving the remaining that would be outside of cannabis, just to give you a sense for what that would mean in the map. Now, obviously, if you look at the map, some of those are large parcels and some are very small parcels. So depending on which parcels, you know, receive that use permit, the landscape could look different.
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like, again, it just seems like it's it's a safer bet to err on the side of caution. It sounds like staff's okay with 25 as well. It's going to cost us money whether we do a moratorium or we bring it back later. And I just prefer to take more cautious approach with it.
I would agree with Vice Mayor Watson. It feels like either way, it will take staff time and money. And proceeding with a little bit of caution feels worthwhile.
Well, I don't feel passionately about the number 30. So like, if if Councilmember Watson and Goldstein really feel like 25 is the better number, I'm I'm happy to go in that direction. I guess it also depends on if what the mayor and Councilmember Schaefer have to say about the number 30, but I I'm really fine either way.
Councilmember Schaefer?
I mean, just to reiterate what I I said before, I mean, this 30 was the number that you know, the planners brought us and had been decided on and they have worked on this legislation for a while. I mean, you know, originally I was I was happy going with 30 and that's still kind of where I stand. So, but that's that's why there's five of us, so.
Yeah, at this point, I'll entertain a motion from the council.
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar item C with the amendment to 25 permits.
I'll second. Sorry, City Manager Deemer, did you have something?
Yeah, just to take public comment and then as this is an ordinance change, we should reintroduce with that change and then that adoption would be at your next meeting. If we were gonna, if this is going to pass, it will need to be a reintroduction. But maybe take public comment first and then we can handle the logistics of that.
Great, thank you. Is there any public comment?
A reminder to Zoom attendees, if you wish to comment on this item, please use the raise your hand function. There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. Karen, would you be able to just go over the the reintroduction piece for for the motion?
Yeah, so I think it's just a quick amendment that just says we'd like to reintroduce ordinance number 1540, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Arcata amending zoning regulation pertaining to the city initiated land use development projects in the cannabis innovation zone, combining zone. And consent to read by title only. Nancy's going to tell me something.
Wave, wave reading the text.
Wave reading of the text and consent to read by title only. It's a group process tonight.
And do we need to mention the decrease to 25 in the motion?
Yes, that well, as amended, yeah.
Okay. So I will make a new motion. So moved, thanks.
Emily, I assume you're comfortable seconding that again.
Yeah, sorry, didn't know if I need to second a second.
Great, we have a motion and a second, so I will call the roll. Councilmember Schaefer?
Nay.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Aye.
And I vote nay as well.
Thank you, everybody, for having the conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
No, absolutely, absolutely. I think it's important to definitely make sure that we talk these things through before before a vote goes through. So we will need, however, since that motion failed, we would need a motion, an alternative motion. I mean, I believe this motion could be to pass consent calendar item C.
I move that we approve consent calendar item C.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and I'll call the roll. Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to old business, the financial forecast of adopted budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And I'll turn it over to staff.
I'll mute myself at the same time and share screen doesn't always want to work. All right, good evening. This looks a little different, but it's the same slides that you've seen. I think I can move pretty quickly because overall our financial forecasting is trending similar to the past couple of months updates that you have seen. As the council and community is well aware, Humboldt County was moved back to the purple tier for COVID-19 response by the state. We do have some further restrictions on our retail and our restaurants and our hotels as a result of that. Another concern that we have is that our wastewater does continue to trend about 2% to 4% below estimates. However, as a side note, our rate changes will go into effect or have on January 1st, so we might start to see a change in that trend. And we'll go through that a little bit more details as we get to the end of the presentation. And then at mid-year, where we won't be doing it on a month by month basis, but at mid-year, we will be asking the council to revise both revenue and cost estimates in several categories we've talked about before, such as parking meter and enforcement, building and sports field rentals and recreation programs where we do see decreases as a result of the effects of the COVID pandemic. On sort of our assurances side and reassurance aside, is that our sales tax and our TUT in general continue to come in at or above projections. And then our hotel tax, the exception of January and December, where we've expected to see lower TOT, but has also been remitted at projected rates or higher. Just for a few details, looking at quarter three. Quarter three, as you probably recall, if you just look at the highlighted piece, the 2019, 20 fiscal year actuals was 715,000. And this year's actuals, although we had forecasted only 436,000, we actually brought in 758,000 in our sales tax for Q3. So a little bit higher than Q3 of last year, but quite a bit of that increase was due to late payments coming in where retailers had delayed their payments due to some programs that the governor put in to give some relief to businesses responding to COVID. A fairly similar trend that we've seen for the numbers coming in for the tax month October that would have been remitted to the state in December. A slight decrease in 2021 over 1920. But still, we are trending just a little higher than we were in sales tax last year at this time pre-pandemic. So that is a good indication so far. We see a very similar trend with our transaction and use tax, that extra local sales tax that we have at point of sale here in Arcata. We see a little higher actual TUT tax in 2021 than we did in 1920. And we see that same trend for what has been remitted so far in December to the state for October sales. A little bit higher this year than we saw last year and overall a little bit higher. Again, some of that increase is delayed payments that were coming in from last year. On our bed tax, hotel tax, or formerly called transient occupancy tax, we are also seeing numbers trend fairly similar to last year. And last year, quarter three, we saw come in at just over 375,000. And this year we saw coming in just at over 372,000, so very close on target. Again, our estimates for that were substantially lower, recognizing that we're not certain on what the effects of COVID-19 will be in all sectors. Right now, we're seeing a slight decrease in overall what we saw remitted in October and November. Or in November and December for October, November sales, but most of those will come in here in December and we'll see what those totals look like in another couple of months. But again, trending on schedule or above what we budgeted this year. So on late and missing payments, originally there was about 194,000 deferred. We've received 52,000 on sales tax for quarters one and two, and then 62,000 in quarter one and quarter two transaction use tax. So we still have just under $80,000 in deferred balance that could continue to come into the city. We, in essence, wrote that off in last fiscal, when we closed last fiscal year's books and did not anticipate that budget. Some of those businesses have probably closed and we will never see those funds. But that is still what's outstanding that we might see come in best case scenario. And water and sewer, we have seen, you know, overall a slight downward trending. And then there's been kind of in these weird fluctuations. So what we've seen in December is a reduction in revenue from the previous year from 2019 in both water and a little bit more substantially in wastewater. The interesting piece to note here is that we did not, which would be in your packet, we did not see a corresponding decrease in consumption. So it is my hope that some of this revenue will be received in January, that we just have more late payments coming in in December than normal between the COVID pandemic and the holidays that we're just seeing more deferred payments than we have in the past. Year-to-date totals in water, we are down 96,000 and year-to-date totals in wastewater down about 86,000. But again, we budgeted in water anyway. This is right on target for where we budgeted, recognizing that there would be some decreases. And wastewater, we are a little bit lower than where we had budgeted, but we expect to make some of that up. The current outlook is that statewide quarter three sales tax was down by just under 1%. And Arcata really was also down by uh, by just under one percent and Arcata really was also down by just under one percent. But what was notable in some of the data is the far north as a region actually increased, uh, sales tax overall by, uh, six and six-point-six percent. And all of that is really coming in through online sales in county and statewide pools. We will review this in much more detail in March as we go through the mid-year budget. Uh, but again, my overall message that we are tracking some lower revenues than last year, but we are still at or above projections for where we should be from a budget standpoint. And with the inauguration today, we do understand that the federal stimulus packages, uh, the look of them will be changing and there is a potential, we're not going to count on this yet, uh, but there is a potential, uh, that local governments will be reflected in some of the federal stimulus packages that are coming out. Uh, so that is an optimistic outlook on, uh, a concern outlook. My final statement will be that we also have some concerns about how the California Department, what's called CD TFA, the Taxing Authority for the state, uh, we understand, has rendered a decision on a restructure that Amazon did in twenty eighteen. Uh, and that could affect how Amazon reports their sales tax for online sales. Uh, we should be able to do a final report out to the council on that next month. Uh, we will see how Amazon begins to report at the end of January and that may or may not make a change in what we recommend in our mid-year, but that is one other piece of data that we are tracking to see if their restructure would reallocate where some of their sales taxes, um, are paid. Are they continued to pay to the local pools where the, uh, purchases are made? Or are they paid to the distribution centers where the merchandise is shipped from? We've been waiting for this decision for a long time, so it's unfortunate the state didn't just release it publicly. But we understand that they have shared their decision, uh, or their concept with Amazon, who is now kind of mulling over how that will affect their billing and what they do. So we should know soon. But are there any specific questions about the budget from the council?
Excuse me, uh, Councilmember Goldstein.
Uh, no questions, thanks Karen.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Uh, no questions and just thank you guys for working so hard to keep us up to date on everything that's happened with the budget. It's really helpful, so thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
No questions, but thank you.
Vice Mayor Watson.
No questions.
I don't have any as well. Uh, do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment on this item.
Okay, are, are there any final thoughts before we move on to our next item? Okay, thank you. And next for old business, we will move to item B, consider authorizing applications to the state community development block grant program, coronavirus response, rounds two and three. May I have a staff report from Director Loya?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor. Vice Mayor and Council, um, for you tonight is consideration of resolution number two zero one dash three-three. Uh, we did take this up, this matter up at your last hearing as a scoping hearing, which was intended to, uh, provide the council, uh, with the, uh, stakeholder outreach that we've conducted to date as well as, uh, to provide the public an opportunity to add to that list for activities to be considered under the COVID CV, uh, two and three allocations being funneled through the community development block grant program. I, uh, in, in a conversation today, I think it was described as building the airplane while we're flying it, uh, that this, uh, information is coming fast and furious. And so I do want to acknowledge, um, you know, that it has been, um, a little confusing. As well as, you know, trying to pull together the information required to provide for, uh, an application of CVG, which is due February and, you know, beginning part of February, February twelfth, uh, is when the application is, can, the latest can be submitted. But at the same time, being able to, uh, bring forward and vet, uh, the items that are on the scoping list for projects that would be viable, uh, for application. And so there's kind of a lot of moving parts here. And I wanted to, uh, you know, acknowledge that what's in the, the resolution doesn't necessarily a hundred percent reflect the, uh, conversation that was had at the last scoping meeting. Um, and so this is all still, uh, pretty open. Uh, we provided an attachment fee, which is on packet page one twenty-nine. Uh, the scoping list again with sort of a quick rough cut, set of criteria that we use to make the recommendation of projects that are included in the resolution. And essentially what we did was we tried to evaluate, you know, is it an eligible activity? Uh, do we have the staff resources or can we pull together the, you know, partner resources, uh, in the amount of time that we have to spend these funds, uh, in order to, uh, implement that program? Do we have, are we maximizing our, you know, our benefit? We only get up to three activities. Can we, you know, draw enough of those funds up to, uh, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars total, which is the allocation for Arcata so that we maximize our, our impact with these funds? And those other criteria listed there. And so if there's, uh, any of these other items that, you know, are on this list that we want to work through, um, I'm ha, I'm happy to do that. I do want to point out that, uh, on the resolution, we have a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, uh, program for rental assistance, uh, which was, uh, I believe, uh, consensus activity among council, uh, during the scoping hearing. The, uh, the funding that, uh, our city manager just referenced, um, that's coming through the federal government, um, funds, funneled through HUD, uh, will be, uh, we're, we're being told, uh, going to really target rental assistance. In addition, we have home funds that the city has already secured, uh, and we can use some of our local program income funds. We can actually start a program immediately, uh, that's similar to what we're proposing for, uh, you know, for this rental assistance program. And so there's a number of different sources of funds that can be used for that. And we've been advised that because of this additional funding that's coming through, we might consider instead of funding a short-term rental assistance and mortgage and utility assistance through the CB two-three, perhaps wait for the funds that are coming through HUD. Now, I want to acknowledge right up front, we don't have much information about what that funding package looks like. And I've spent a good part of this afternoon trying to track down whether or not mortgage assistance will be included in that. And it appears that it may not be, uh, but I don't have anything definitive on that. I do have other information as well, as long as we're adding to the, the pile of, um, speculation that's out there, uh, that the feds are also going to potentially, um, revamp some of their mortgage assistance programs that are, that are already in play. Um, and so because of that, staff is recommending that you consider, um, modifying the resolution instead of having the public service, short-term rental mortgage and utility assistance at a hundred and forty-seven, that instead we look at, um, the scoping list, uh, project number thirteen, which would be to provide, amend, uh, uh, upgrades to the city's annex building that Arcata House Partnership operates out of, so that they could better serve the homeless during the, uh, the COVID pandemic. The, so, so that's, that's a point for your consideration tonight, is whether to, uh, swap those programs out. Um, in addition, we have, uh, you know, pub, for the public assistance to improve outreach and engagement efforts. The, uh, you know, the dollar figure of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, that one includes, uh, some admin associated with that. And so, you know, we don't have a firm, um, uh, dollar figure on what that program would look like. But I think anywhere, uh, north of fifty thousand dollars will provide the resources that we need as a city to do the kind of engagement that we need to do in, uh, COVID pandemic. Right now, in-person meeting is, you know, it's, it's off the table and that is largely the strategy that we use to do public engagement. Uh, we set a really good precedent for, uh, very open and deep-targeting engagement when we started working on the housing element in twenty nineteen. And obviously twenty twenty changed all of that. We have been learning, uh, over twenty twenty about a number of online resources that help with that deep targeting. And, um, you know, in addition, you know, having the resources to be able to do translation services and, you know, produce YouTube videos that we can outreach to people actually in their homes as opposed to at the Little League Field, um, is what we're planning on doing with that money. And so I guess what I'm suggesting is that if you, if you do reorganize this, um, a hundred and fifty may not be enough to do the Arcata House project. And so we might look at restructuring the dollar figures here a little bit, dropping the public service down to seventy-five or eighty thousand, uh, which would encompass both the administration associated with doing the activity and the activity, and then put the rest of the, that funding into, uh, the Arcata House project. You know, lastly, we have on here, uh, the infrastructure radio project, which we described last time. Some of the infrastructure associated with the, uh, police radio, uh, equipment is, is older and will be obsolete in the next couple of years. This is a project that basically affects everyone in the city, uh, in terms of the, the police and emergency response. And so I know Eileen, uh, Rebecca from, uh, the top shop is, uh, online tonight. She can help, uh, describe that project to you if you have questions about it. Uh, but these are the top three projects staff is recommending based on that rubric that we went through to evaluate eligibility, feasibility, and, um, and, and maximizing the, the use of the COVID, uh, two-three funds. So I know that was a lot, uh, to digest. I want to make sure, um, we answer any questions you may have and certainly to take any public comments if there is.
Great, thank you. Well, we'll start with questions, uh, from Vice Mayor Watson.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Um, I don't, I don't have any questions. Um, I understand the need to, of why we needed to shift. And I think as, um, I did want a portion of it going to housing and but I, you know, I realize that there's no sense in duplicating funds and we don't have a lot of time to get this money, um, secured for people. So, um, I do, you know, changing to upgrading the Arcata House annex so that we can still keep that as a viable option is a good alternative to um, rental and mortgage assistance, you know, just as long as we're as sure as we can be that that is coming down the line for people that need that help. So that's, that's my two cents on it.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Um, I really appreciate Councilmember Atkins Salazar bringing that up. Um, I don't have any questions, but I, I do share that same sentiment that, um, I completely understand that there's other funding most likely or hopefully coming down the line, so it makes sense to shift, but just keeping our attention around housing, um. In my opinion, I don't think that item six, um, the radios for APD are necessarily the best use of our funds. I know that it's a recommendation from staff, but I would rather see, um, item four or which is about assistance for food banks, um, or something else that could be not directly rental assistance, but assistance to those in need in the community. Um, there's also item number twelve, which is funding for undocumented residents. Um, and since we don't often have many, um, funding opportunities where you don't need documentation, I would be interested in pursuing that as well. Um, so that's, that was just my only thought about the, um, suggested, um, items and projects. Thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Um, I don't necessarily have any questions. I did just want to, you know, uh, show my support for item number thirteen and I recently had the opportunity to get the House Partnership at their board of directors meeting and they really did emphasize, you know, hoping that this would be something that was on the plane, their need for also especially during COVID to have these expansions to make it more secure and, and in safety and also in health safety, um, for their space to be able to serve as many people as they possibly can. And I think it's important when looking at these funds that we are putting them into the pro, projects that are going to help as many people as possible and the people with the greatest need. Um, so I did want to just show my support for item thirteen.
Great, um. Yeah, I, I feel similarly about, um, you know, if we have other funds with the home program coming down the pipeline, I think it does make sense to redirect, um, to where we can also make the most good with these funds, um, and, um, I guess at this point, let me open up to public comment and then we can come back to the council for, for discussion.
A reminder to attendees on the Zoom, if you wish to comment on this item, please use your raise your hand function. There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, well, is there any further, oh, Director Loya, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, uh, to the comment about undocumented residents, we did confirm, um, with the CBG program that there's no citizenship requirement for any of the programs. Um, and so certainly, um, you know, folks that live in our community that are undocumented are, are welcome to access these funds and these programs. So I just wanted to make sure that the council, uh, was aware of that.
Um, well, also, I, um, when I met earlier in the week with Director Loya, we did talk about number four, the, the food banks and the, you know, getting food to the people. And it was my understanding that that wasn't, um, a viable option because we were pretty well-covered in our community in that area and there weren't, maybe if Director Loya could speak to that, um, for the rest of the council?
Sure, um, we have reached out a number of times, uh, to Food for People, um, and then we, we tried to reach out as well, uh, to some of our, uh, community organizations, uh, since we weren't getting, um, uh, you know, response from Food for People. Uh, and to, to date, we just, we really haven't had, seen a, uh, an entity that's, uh, you know, willing to step forward and take that role on. Again, we are, you know, operating at lightning speed here. There is one more council meeting on, uh, let's see, February third before the, the deadline for application. Um, and so it's certainly, if the council wants to, uh, you know, hit the pause button and, you know, hold this over for one more meeting and staff can do some additional legwork to try and track those down, we're, we're more than happy to do that. The, you know, we're trying to do as much as we can to try and get the application material lined up and submitted as early as possible. Each one of these activities requires a separate application process. Um, and so, you know, we have to make sure that we have time to actually, you know, get those, those applications in. So that, you know, we're working against a couple of different timelines. But if, if the council wants to, uh, you know, hit the pause button, have us go out and do additional research on that, that food, um, and really, um, you know, the food support, food security, and really try and, uh, drum up a partner for that. We, we can try and do that, um, put some more effort into it. Sometimes with these, uh, you know, with these grant-funded projects, uh, it, you have to have sort of a series of different magical events happen all at one time and having a partner is really critical. And, and we know Arcata Houses, uh, is, um, there for that, uh, that project, uh, that we've recommended. And so that's, that's part of the ingredients for why we're, we're recommending that.
I appreciate that, uh, follow-up information. I, yeah, I completely understand a community partner to, to take that on is really important. Um, and also through my, my other meetings this week, I want to also voice support for item thirteen. Um, I think it's, it's a really important project for sure.
Madam Mayor, uh, can I just offer a little bit of context on the police radio infrastructure?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I, and I all, I know you're all, um, there's a lot to consider, um, there's a finite amount of money and there are a lot of needs and, and we as a police department, we understand that and will support whatever your final decisions are, but I just wanted to provide a little bit more context into why, um, the radio infrastructure, uh, program is, is really a significant piece in this is, first of all, there are no other monies available right now for us to replace what is an aging, uh, radio infrastructure system. Last year, we spent ten thousand dollars to have Dave Wireless, who is our, our communication provider, uh, conduct an engineering study and they recommended a complete overhaul of our entire radio system. And, you know, the upwards of five to six hundred thousand dollars and that is everything, the antennas and wiring. And as you can tell by where we are here, uh, along the north coast, uh, you know, the weather does significant amount of damage over time. And it is time, uh, to replace the infrastructure now. I wanted to give you a little bit of a practical piece to this is, if you remember in, uh, in my reporting out from the last meeting, I acknowledged the work of our officers and dispatchers at the Motel Six. One thing I didn't add is that our radio system was down at the time. So you can only imagine with the danger that the officers were facing, they were unable to communicate with the dispatcher. So our supervisor at the scene had to actually get on a cell phone and call our dispatch center to relay information directly from the scene. You can only imagine that the delay in that and the amount of stress that that caused in a, in a life threatening situation. What's interesting about our, our, our structure right now is there is no warning when the radios are going to go down. They simply go down oftentimes inexplicably. And then there could be a several day delay before Day Wireless is able to come in and actually replace or troubleshoot the issue, get it back up and running. In the meantime, we have very spotty, if any, radio coverage in several places throughout the city. And what this boils down to is really our officers out in the field. You can only imagine, you know, how important it is for them to be able to communicate with our dispatcher in case they need help and they need help right now, or a community member needs help right now. It is, it's absolutely critical that we have a redundant system that's robust, that is state of the art. And ultimately, what we're trying to do here as well is make sure that our system is able to communicate with Eureka, with Humboldt County sheriffs and other agencies. Because right now, we just don't have the, the system built for that. So I'm just asking for you to, just to consider the women and the men who serve here so honorably in Arcata, understanding you have a lot of needs. And I think Director Loya did mention that there may be other monies for some of these other things that you want to pay for. As uncertain as that is, if you would just keep us in mind, I also think that is a huge statement that you're making to our police personnel. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It sounded like right after we called public comment, someone raised their hand. And I just want to make sure that if they did in fact want to speak for public comment, we give them the opportunity to do so.
Yes, phone caller ending in six, five, three, seven, do you wish to make public comment?
Yes, this is Darlene Spore from Arcata House Partnership. I want to thank you for supporting us and for considering these expenses so that we can continue to provide the best service to our community and to our most vulnerable citizens that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll turn it back to the council. Or sorry, is there any other public comment?
There is no other public comment.
Okay, okay, thank you. So I will do a roll call to see if there's any further comments or questions from the council. And I'll also entertain any motions, of course, as well. Vice Mayor Watson. Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions and I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt resolution number two, zero, one, dash, three, three, authorizing the submission of the city's CPG, CV two and CV three applications.
I will second that motion.
I'm sorry, can I make one change to the resolution to reflect, I think, the item thirteen on the scoping list? So on the first line where it says public, under section one, where it says public service term rental mortgage and utility assistance should instead read public facility and infrastructure, Arcata House Partnership Annex Project. And I would recommend increasing that dollar figure to a hundred and eighty-two fifty-six and reducing the public, the next line to eighty thousand.
Yeah, unless anyone objects, I'll basically make the same motion as amended by the director.
And I will second that. Okay, so I will go forth and call for a vote. Vice Mayor Watson.
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next we'll move to old business item C, adoption of urgency ordinance number fifteen forty-two, extending ordinance number fifteen thirty-six, temporary restrictions on the eviction of commercial tenants due to non-payment of rent because of COVID nineteen. And I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
You. So this is for your consideration to extend the existing tenant protections that the council has for commercial tenancies. This is, let's see, where to start first as a sidebar. This is an urgency ordinance, but it has a, a different mechanism for adoption than the urgency ordinance we talked about under the cannabis innovation zone cap. That is a, a specifically a planning tool and it has a planning process that has to be followed. This is done on special public health and safety findings, and those are all embedded in the ordinance. So I just wanted to use this as a sort of education point since it came up earlier. Thank you for indulging me. The, the item before you is the extension of the existing ordinance that expires at the end of this month. It is proposed in the draft before you, ordinance for fifteen forty-two, to be extended through the end of the year, which would be consistent with AB fifteen that was introduced at the state level. Remember that the residential tenants are protected under current state law and the city is prohibited from adopting any type of local ordinance that would attempt to protect or regulate tenant, I'm sorry, residential tenancies because the state law is so comprehensive. The state law provides, the current state law provides its protections through February one. And there's one more month in which the rent has to be paid. AB fifteen was addressed to extend that through the end of the year. And that was why we brought fifteen forty-two to you to extend consistent with that provision. When AB fifteen was introduced, there was a companion bill that was also introduced that would allocate approximately two point six billion dollars from the state budget to use for rental and mortgage assistance payments. That is pending. It has not been adopted. The, the governor is urging action be taken on both, on, on, at least on the budget bill before the end of the the month. Now, the AB fifteen was just reported to the first committee and it has made no other movement than that. So the, the sort of static nature that we are at least observing of these bills does sort of exemplify the difficult policy choices that are made around tenant protections. That also is one that the council needs to address. On the one hand, the tenant protections are so important to keep people housed and to keep people basically in business. On the other hand, the, the landlords need the income, often need the income from the, the rent. And under the state residential protections that are currently in place, there actually are income eligibility requirements. So high income tenants and high income properties don't qualify for the protections. So that tension is unfortunately, I think, what's driving the, the inability to see this move a little more quickly through the state. And it presents a dilemma to you because we have an ordinance that expires at the end of the month. And so I, I, and I see as I'm trying to figure out, you know, how, where we go from here. I see three options, but you're certainly welcome to propose alternatives. One option is that you do nothing tonight and we come back to you at your next meeting on February third with an update. And, you know, we, we listen to what your, your feelings are and we, we present you with, with new proposals that are consistent with the authority that the new state law provides. Second would be to adopt the fifteen forty-two as is, extending the commercial protections through the end of the calendar year. I don't advise doing this because I think it is a little out of sync with the current debate going on at the state level. If the state does adopt the, the, the budget provisions that provide the, the rental and mortgage relief, that may be all that's needed. We would obviously have to look at that and see how that would impact commercial tenancies. And the other thing is maybe the, the impacts of the pandemic won't be with us through the end of the year. That's obviously wishful thinking on, on my part. The third option would be to adopt the ordinance tonight, but modified so that it has a shorter duration, maybe, you know, it, it goes to the end of February, for example. I will note that the county of LA did extend their more, their protections, both residential and commercial protections through the month of February. So they're taking a short approach. They're keeping them in place, but they're taking a very short durational approach. So I'm happy to answer your questions. That's sort of where I am now with this dilemma. I think you all understand the policy implications for where to go from here and I'm, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Great, thank you. We'll start with questions from Councilmember Schaefer.
So if we did decide to just run it through the month of February and then, you know, we, we want to bring it back up to the council, it would just be a similar urgency ordinance that we would look at again, and then we could decide to extend it another month if we desired, right?
Correct. And then we could also evaluate what's happening with the residential protections and what the state is doing.
Okay. Yeah, that's my, so yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Goldstein?
So to wait and see what the state is doing and see where the residential protections are, is that the reason? If we were to say like through February as opposed to say through like May or August or something a little bit longer, but not through the end of the year, is that the reasoning behind your recommendation?
That would be the reasoning. It does, the residential tenancies unfortunately exposed, the, the residential tenancies in Arcata unfortunately exposed for the month of, of February because we can't do anything. The council is, is preempted from adopting any right now. But I, I think that there is enough urgency at the state level that some form of protection will be provided for at least the residential tenancies. I wish I knew more, but that is, you know, excuse me for running on a bit, but yeah, that is exactly the point. Short term, see what happens and then we come back and, and then see what you want to do.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Watson?
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much. I mean, I would be in favor of just going ahead and waiting as well.
Okay, and yeah, I, I, I don't have any questions. Let's see if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on this item.
A reminder to attendees on Zoom, if you wish to comment on this item, please use the raise your hand function. We do not have any public comment on this item.
Okay, well, are there any comments or a motion from the council? We'll start with Councilmember Schaefer.
No further questions or comments at this time.
Okay, and also we can entertain a motion at this time too. So count, let's see, Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
I would, I would be happy to, to make a motion based on our attorney's recommendation. I think it's just a little bit different than what's in our packet though. So that's why we're all, I think, maybe hesitant to. So if you could guide me in that, I would be happy to.
Sure. What, what is it that you would like to do? And then I can happily guide you.
What is your recommendation that we just go ahead and do it till the end of February, similar to what Los Angeles is doing?
That is one recommendation and the alternative recommendation, and I'm, I, I could go either way. I, I don't have a strong preference, would be to wait until your next council meeting and see where we are. So either of those is, is what I would recommend. If you want to extend it one month through February, then you would be adopting urgency ordinance number fifteen forty-two, amended so that it is extend, extending the existing ordinance until February twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-one, wave reading of the text and.
And do you see any problems with, with doing that?
I don't think so. I, I think that we are okay with that legally. The, the basis for the city to be acting in this field, regulating commercial tenancies is provided in some of the executive orders that the governor issued last year. And I think those are still liable.
So I would be happy to make the motion as described by Attorney Diamond. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Now we'll go for a vote. Councilmember Schaefer? Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next we have city goal setting twenty twenty-one, twenty-two preparation stakeholder engagement meetings. We'll have a staff report from City Manager Deemer from the computer of Vice Mayor Watson.
It is the night for technical difficulties and mine just went blank. So while we're getting it restarted, I'm going to go ahead and introduce this item. But I would also, before I do, would like to introduce Julia Heatherwick, who is with us as well. Mayor Pereira has sweetly asked and she has sweetly accepted to assist us with the stakeholder meetings that the council has laid forward. So just as a little backdrop, the council has, has opted to hold five different stakeholder meetings that would cover a gamut of topics that have been determined to be priorities before we move into goal setting. And so really in preparation for the council goal setting, these stakeholder meetings will be held in the month of February. The council, the, so the council will bring together key leaders to encourage input, idea sharing, collaboration and support on the key topics. The input gathered then will inform the council on their strategic planning and on our goal setting that will happen in March. So we recognize as we have talked about during the last couple of meetings, that this has been sort of a fast evolving process. But Julia has agreed to help us kind of ground it in some good purpose and with some good outcomes. And so the proposal before you tonight is you have already established your subcommittees for each of the five topics, but is to just revisit each of those five topics as a group and make sure that especially for topics that you are not on that subcommittee for, if there is anything in particular that you would like to see as an outcome or a goal of that stakeholder engagement, that you have the opportunity to express that tonight so that the subcommittee that will be holding that stakeholder meeting will be able to incorporate that into their planning. And then the second piece, yeah, Councilmember Schaefer?
Don't we have six subcommittees? Because I'm looking at the list here and I don't see Valley West on there. And I believe that was one of our subcommittees, or at least it's one that I'm, think I'm on, so.
Yes, Valley West is a subcommittee.
Okay, just on the, the staff president with me on it, does only have five or four. It only has four. Okay.
Okay, so maybe that just got cut off at the bottom of the page.
Okay, it might have been cut off then on mine or something.
Yeah, so you and Councilmember Goldstein are serving on the Valley West Committee. Yes, we do have five.
I wasn't missing. Okay, great. I wasn't missing. Okay, great, yeah.
And then the other goals that I was hoping we could agreement on tonight are just two things. One is for any stakeholders that you would like to see invited to any of the five groups, the council could just commit to getting a list of those to myself and or Kayla by Friday, then we can put those together and get those lists out to the subcommittees. Uh, and then lastly would be just to, you know, can indicate the level of authority that we're granting to each of the subcommittees. I mean, I guess that the intention and the hope is that, you know, we just get some confirmation that in the end you're just trusting the subcommittees to take the input that they received tonight, to take the stakeholder list, but to refine either end or both to make sure that they've got a good stakeholder engagement as they move forward. You know, as a subcommittee and then we're able to schedule those. And so Julia is here with us tonight and can feel free to fill in anything that I maybe missed from that process. And I was hoping that my computer be up and going and I'd put a quick screenshot of those five committees that are up here. But I'm happy just to list them as well. We have the Valley West Stakeholder Group. We have a stakeholder group that will meet on housing and services for those experiencing homelessness. We have a group that'll be meeting on infrastructure and on economic recovery, especially coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic. Mental health and social services is the fifth subcommittee. So based on those groups, what I thought we could do mayor is just maybe just take each of them and open it up to the council and or the public for any comments that we would like to receive and we can capture those tonight and work them in then to sort of the outcomes and desired goals for each of the stakeholder groups.
Great. First of all, Julia, if you wanted to introduce yourself a little bit, give, I think that would be helpful. If you have anything to add as well.
I don't have anything to add. I would just to introduce myself. My name is Julia Heatherwick. I work at Humboldt State University in the College of Extended Education. And I'm also, I also do learning experience design, meeting design and facilitation. And so my goal and, and reason to volunteer is to help, help you be present in the meeting so that you can listen to the stakeholders, have the conversations, and I can help craft that framework. So you don't have to necessarily worry about the technology or, or moving to the next item. I can be that extra pair of hands for you. So I'm, I'm thrilled to, to assist and, and happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. So why don't we start with any input on, we'll start with Valley West. And so again, state, any stakeholders, make sure to get those lists to to Karen and Kayla by the end of the week, but any input for the, for the Valley West group, outcomes or things that you would like for them to consider. Let's start with a Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Um, I think that both Councilmember Schaefer and Goldstein have a really good bead on Valley West. And I know that they've been pursuing this, so I don't have anything to add.
Great. Let's see, Vice Mayor Watson.
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
And I don't have any, anything to add as well. Let's see. So next for, for infrastructure, and that's Vice Mayor Watson and myself that are serving on that. So let's see, Councilmember Goldstein, any input for infrastructure?
I don't have anything to add. I'm sure you both are doing a great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Um, yeah, I don't think I have, have anything to add. I would, I guess, just wanna express my support of maybe seeing CRTP on that group, but I know that they've, they've sent letters to the council and have expressed their interest. So I'm probably pretty sure they're already on your list. So yeah, thank you guys.
Uh, Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. And let's see, economic recovery. I believe we have Councilmember Atkins Salazar and is it Vice Mayor Watson on that as well? So let's see, Councilmember Schaefer, any, any input for, for that piece?
Uh, nothing to add. Thank you.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Nothing to add. Thanks.
Okay. Let's see, uh, mental health and social services. And for that we have Councilmembers Goldstein and Atkins Salazar. So Vice Mayor Watson, any, any input for, for that piece?
No input. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and let's see, Councilmember Schaefer.
Um, no input. I know both of these council members are very involved in, in that community and have a good list, I'm sure. So thank you.
Okay. And then housing and homelessness, we have Councilmembers Goldstein and Schaefer. Anything to add? Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Watson?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Um, let's see. Julia, is there anything on your end that you think we should also be touching on today to inform the subcommittees?
And just as a, when we, when we meet is we'll be, wanna, we wanna focus in on specifically what we want to gather from the, from the stakeholders. And so we'll get pretty clear on what it is that we want to, or questions that we want to ask. And so I would suggest considering what are those questions? And then I can assist in creating the process to gather the information from those questions and we can work on that together in our individual meetings.
A point of clarification with that, when we talk about questions, are these questions that would be specific to a particular subject area or general questions that could fit into various stakeholder meetings?
Well, and then I'll, I'll ask, I'll, I'll ask also for you to, to chime in on this, but my understanding is that we would craft it per stakeholder group, that we'd have a similar structure and that we'd be gathering the information in a similar way so that it'll be presented so that you'd be able to do all, you know, take that information and actually use it in your planning process. But it would be just some specific information you want to gather for, uh, from the stakeholders that will help you with your focus on your priorities. So it could be the same and it could be different depending on that, that stakeholder group. So would you add anything to that? To that? Either, either you, Sophia or Karen.
So in turn, oh, Karen, you just popped on.
We're just going dual technology. So I think that if there, I mean, I think in part that is just if there was any input that members that were not on the subcommittee wanted to share, that that was the intent of, you know, sort of going through the list a little bit. If not, hopefully we can define those outcomes and those kind of formulated questions. When Julia has agreed to meet with each subcommittee ahead of time of the meetings and could finalize those at that meeting as well. But again, I think that is just, you know, making sure, and I, and I think that this is the indication and this has been all along, that the council really is empowering those subcommittees to make those final decisions and, and to create that stakeholder meeting based on, you know, their intuition and working with Julia around that purpose and outcomes.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, are, is, are there any other thoughts that council members would like to, to weigh in at this point before the subcommittees go off and, and do their respective work?
Uh, even after, after the subcommittees make their selections, it still comes to our goal setting process, right? And we'll still have discussion about it then. It's not like a, a final decision. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly. Um, this, this is just meant to be a way to make the most out of these stakeholder meetings is having that structure in place and that coordination in place with the subcommittees. So yeah, this is all to bring back through the goal setting process. So yeah, I think really it's empowering the subcommittees to do this stakeholder engagement work and be able to bring those recommendations and those insights back to the council for further deliberation and, and any decision making we need to do. Uh, it looks like we have some public comment. Uh, so I will open it up to to the public for any input.
Hey, we do have a public comment with the screen name Bob. Bob, if you're able to go ahead and talk, you will have two minutes, please.
Okay, I just have a basic question. Um, I'm looking through this list and they're all, they all seem to divide up the problems. But then you have the fifth thing, which is Valley West. That's a region where all these things apply. It'd be infrastructure, Valley West would be part of that. Economic recovery and Valley West would be part of that. Why does Valley West get a special part of it on their own? That's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
There is no other public comment.
Okay. Um, well, I didn't know if this, I mean, I'm happy to, to respond to that question, but I also didn't know if our subcommittee on Valley West also wanted to, to respond or provide any context for, for that. Councilmember Schaefer?
Is pains and just kind of, yeah, maybe we want to work on infrastructure, Valley West, but maybe we want to work on mental health services in Valley West. But also, you know, there, there is more to that region and just the overall kind of general neglect that region of Arcata has kind of stronger focus as an overall topic, especially considering how much we all heard about it during our campaigns and that also other council members.
Great. So I apologize. I think there's a bit of a lag on my end.
I, I think I heard myself go in a little, yeah, my internet might be unstable right now.
Okay. And then was there anyone else that had a comment? I, I just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone.
I think that Councilmember Schaefer covered it all, but I did miss a little bit with the internet connection. So I was just gonna just jump into, I'm, I'm pretty sure you covered it all and answered beautifully. Um, but yeah, I was just gonna say that we, I think a, a lot of us on our campaign trail often heard the sentiment that Valley West felt forgotten or left out of a lot of what Arcata gets offered. Um, and so putting our special attention to Valley West where you're completely right, Bob. All of these issues, the other four groups do fall under Valley West. But we wanted to extend extra attention there after we, I think many of us had heard the, that they had felt forgotten.
Great. Um, let's see, Julia, Karen, is there anything at this point, anything else that you need at this meeting before we move forward in the process?
There's nothing else that I need in the meeting, but if any of the council members have follow-up questions for me, I'm available and I can provide my information for us to connect if you need to before our actual meetings. So I'm happy to answer any questions or talk through some of your thoughts.
I think we're good.
Great. Okay. Well, yeah, there's no other action to take tonight. Um, thank you again, Julia, for, for your assistance through, through this process. And thank you all to our council members that are going to be diving in deeper to these very big issues and doing stakeholder engagement that I think will, will be really, really useful for our, our work, not only for goal setting, but I think for our future policy work as well. Okay, so next we will move on to excuse me, just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. Okay, now we'll move on to new business. Public hearing to consider and adopt resolution number 201-32 confirming $36,181.32 in city costs incurred from abating nuisance conditions existing at 3555 and 3525 Curtis Avenue, Arcata, California, and ordering collection of costs as a special assessment. And we have a staff report from City Engineer Country.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, staff and members of the public. The subject properties, uh, 3555 and 3525 Curtis Avenue are located just north end of El Cebu Boulevard, just past the St. Louis Bridge. The nuisance abatement process for this property started in 2019, mid 2019. We got a call and we went to the site and checked the site. There were some, a lot of illegal activities, illegal structures and a lot of nuisance. Now, we contacted the property owner and notified regarding the, um, their obligation to obey the nuisance at the properties. However, we did not receive any response from the property owner. So in December of 2019, we brought this item to council to receive approval to obey the nuisance at these properties and it was approved. In September, uh, sorry, uh, before that, in August of 2019 during COVID, we were able to get the warrant from the court and enter the property and do the abatement. And in September of 2020, we were able to complete the abatement process through some help from New Life Services. To date, the city has incurred approximately $36,000 in this process. In October of 2020, we notified the owner regarding this public hearing and informed them to come to the meeting. And again, in January, we send them the Zoom information how they can attend the meeting. However, to date, we have not received any feedback or response from the property owner. Once this resolution is adopted and recorded, uh, we will be working with County Auditor's Office and try to collect this assessment. Uh, so today we are recommending to hold a public hearing and direct staff to collect the, the $26,000 in special assessment, uh, process. So with that, if you have any questions, you know, I can answer the question. It was a long process. As you know, now you've been seeing this in the council meeting at at least three times it came to the council meeting. So it was a long process. Now we are done and this is the last final piece of the work.
Great. Thank you. I'll now ask for questions, starting with Vice Mayor Watson.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Goldstein.
No questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions as well. Um, let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
As a reminder, if you are logged onto the Zoom, uh, as an attendee, click on raise your hand. Uh, if you would like to comment on this item, or if you've called in via phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. Is there any public comment on this item? We do not have any public comment, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so with that, I will entertain a, a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 201-32 confirming, uh, $36,181.32 in city costs incurred from abating nuisance conditions existing at 3555 and 3525 Curtis Avenue, Arcata, California, and ordering collection of costs as a special assessment.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I will call the vote by roll call. Vice Mayor Watson.
Hi.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Hi.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Hi.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Motion passes. Thank you for, for our staff's work on that over the, the past couple of years. Uh, next, uh, we have a presentation by staff on the City of Arcata's Emergency Operations Plan Update and Community Preparedness Efforts. May we have an introduction by City Manager Deemer, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First, uh, thank you to our IT manager Dylan Savage for getting me back online here with you tonight on my phone. So um, and then really I just wanted to introduce, uh, this has been a goal of the city council and a long-term goal of staff to completely overhaul the city's emergency operation plan and then develop the hazard annexes that are before you tonight. So these are going to be very fluid documents for us. There is no requirement that the council officially adopt. There is no requirement that the council officially adopt them, but we did want to share them with you as a council goal and share them with the public so that we can continue to make them better and continue to augment them. But really, what I wanted to do tonight was to introduce the team that has been working on this for the last well over a year, year and a half. And on that team has been our Lead for America fellow, Gillan Martin. So and also appreciation to council, past council member Ornellus, who brought us Gillan as a fellowship on a two-year fellowship, working full-time with the City of Arcata. And quite honestly, without that fellowship that we put this task as one as the primary focus, I don't think we would be here tonight. And she's been fully supported from our Environmental Services staff, Tracy Watkins, and our Police Department staff, Brian Hoffman, who's been working, the three of them to bring this. So I'm going to turn it over. I believe it'll be Gillan sharing her screen to go through the plan and for their presentation tonight. Thank you all for your work on this. It's a huge accomplishment for the city.
Hi, everyone, and just let me hold while I share my screen. Alrighty. Tracy, if you want to take it away.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, you're a little quiet, but we can hear you.
Okay. Okay, so good evening, councilmembers, city staff and members of the public. So as Karen said, we're here to talk to you tonight about emergency planning with the City of Arcata, including our emergency operations plan, our hazard annexes and a whole community preparedness. So I'll start with introductions. Like she said, I'm Tracy Watkins. I work for Environmental Services. With me, we've got Brian Hoffman, Administrative Sergeant for the Arcata Police Department, and Gillan Martin, our Lead for America fellow. So with guidance from the City Manager's Office and other departmental staff, the three of us comprise the City of Arcata's Emergency Preparedness Team. So why is it emergency planning important and why are we discussing it this evening? So it's important because Arcata is vulnerable to many hazards, as you can see listed on the slide. The risk assessment that was completed in the two thousand nineteen Humboldt County Hazard Mitigation Plan assessed how vulnerable we are to these hazards and ranked them according to the risk they posed to Humboldt County. And we have integrated this ranking assessment into our emergency operations plan. So among the high-ranking hazards in our area are earthquakes, extreme weather, landslides, all of which you have most likely personally experienced to some degree or another if you've lived in our county for an extended period of time. So being prepared for all the hazards that we are vulnerable to and having a plan in place can really help us mitigate mitigate these disasters. So to give you kind of a brief history of emergency planning at the City of Arcata, our most recent emergency operations plan went into effect in two thousand seven. The document was then later identified to have some gaps. And in an effort to make it more useful and functional in the event of emergency, a working group was formed in two thousand eighteen to revise the plan. The working group was comprised of individuals from various city departments and had the following goals: so to revise the EOP and create functional hazard annexes for individual disaster scenarios; to move beyond existing paper documents and have personnel that are trained and understand their roles during emergency response; and to engage the community in preparing with us by creating a network of trained and established volunteer services that we can activate in an emergency. So some specific tasks that were assigned to the working group were to update the city's EOP, including the addition of appendices and to create hazard annexes. These have all been completed. They have been reviewed by partners and they are pending final review. Once final review is completed, the EOP will be posted on the city's website. Another task was to determine our emergency operations center roles for each staff position in case of the EOC was activated and to ensure that each EOC role had backup staffing, two to three positions deep. This has also been completed and can be found in our EOC appendices. So we were also tasked to develop a training schedule to keep staff up to date on the incident command system as well as other necessary aspects of emergency preparedness and response. The staff's training schedule has been completed and can also be found in the appendices of our EOP. But our goal is to kind of implement starting in the next few months, at least the online portion that is an in-person training, which isn't going to happen as quickly because of COVID. So lastly, we've been working on identifying opportunities for the community to aid and assist in emergencies, specifically through the Arcata search team, the Neighborhood Watch program as well as others, and to coordinate preparedness efforts with crucial partners such as Humboldt County, Arcata Search, HSU and the National Weather Service. And this will be an ongoing effort, and we look forward to strengthening these connections over time and working together in disaster preparedness.
Okay, the Emergency Operations Plan is the City of Arcata's guideline to the response and recovery of emergencies and disasters and outlines our departmental and regional partners. It's organized into three different sections, the first being the basic plan. This is the primary document that provides the plans and actions that mitigates disasters and emergencies. It describes the activities surrounding the mitigation, response and recovery of a disaster. Second would be the hazard annexes. These are specific plans to respond to particular emergencies and disasters. They incorporate the Incident Command Stricture called ICS and best practices and partner coordination and the use of resources. Third would be appendices. They contain reference materials such as Staffing Emergency Operations Center and outlines a staff training plan. The formation of plan and annexes helps ensure that we as a city can be reimbursed for costs incurred during the declared emergency. So we have five appendices attached to our Emergency Operations Plan. An example, this is the Emergency Operations Staffing Roster you see before you. When the EOC is activated, there are numerous positions that need to be filled in order to effectively manage an emergency. So when you activate an EOC, there are three levels, one being the lowest, two and three being the highest. We have highlighted the only the first five positions that need to be filled, such as the Director of Emergency Services, EOC Director, EOC Coordinator. You'll notice that it's three D two, so should any one position not be fulfilled for whatever reason, someone's not able to respond to the city, there are two backup persons that could fill that spot. A full activation of a level three could require twenty-four positions to be filled. So our hazard annexes. We have identified eight hazards that require specific mitigation, response and recovery plans due to their likelihood of impacting our community. First is civil disturbance. We are currently seeing this occur throughout our country for a myriad of reasons. The City of Arcata has thus far been fortunate to have experienced healthy freedom of expression without it being accompanied by violence or the need for major law enforcement intervention. Communicable diseases, everyone knows this one, we're all in the middle of a public health emergency, worldwide emergency with COVID nineteen. Earthquake and tsunami, energy shortage, shortage, energy shortage and power outage. We experienced this in the fall of two thousand nineteen with the PSPS, public safety power shut-offs. And it really forced us as a city to quickly form plans and partnerships with the city government, the county, HSU and private business. Extreme weather, flood and landslide, hazardous materials and oil spills, mass casualty event. This is any event where casualties far off strip our local abilities to medically care for wounded and major structure and wildfire. So an example of a role or responsibility in the hazard annexes pertains to the role of the city council during an emergency. The city council is expected amongst other things to lead the community engagement, approve the proclamation of local emergency, support public information efforts and consider short and long-term recovery staff recommendations.
So planning with the whole community preparedness approach, this is sort of what Tracy spoke to when she named a goal of the group as bringing the community into preparedness with us. The role of government in disasters can quickly become unmanageable, and if businesses, households and individuals are prepared, then the short and long-term impacts of emergencies will be mitigated. So here are some steps to make sure that we're preparing and planning with crucial partners and the community in our preparedness efforts. So the first are trainings locally. I think we've seen councilmember Pereira at a few of these. We're really lucky here in Humboldt County to have the Blue Lake Rancheria as a California specialized training institute to provide FEMA trainings for free as well as HSU. And these trainings have not only upped our three individual preparedness expertise and the amount that's gone into these plans, but they've also allowed us to build crucial relationships with partners that we're going to be coordinating with when we respond to disasters. So the second is the National League of Cities Leadership and Community Resilience Program. In January of two thousand twenty, the City of Arcata was named a member, one of eight cities in the two thousand twenty Leadership and Community Resilience Cohort. And this program is designed to help communities build resilience to climate change and natural disasters. With the funding we've got from this program, we have brought on a part-time interpreter slash translator, Laura Munoz. Our proposal for this program was specifically to ensure that limited English proficiency residents, primarily Spanish-speaking folks in Arcata, many of whom live in the Valley West area closest to the tsunami inundation zone as well as the Matthews Dam failure inundation zone, that these folks are have access to emergency prep info in Spanish and also that the city's emergency alert system, Code RED, sends out messages in Spanish. So with Laura's assistance, we have been able to make that happen, which brings me to the emergency prep webpage. You can get to this through the learn about page of the city's website. There are fantastic info about our local hazards and resources there for household and individual preparedness available in both English and Spanish. And then finally, I put these two groups that do continuous emergency prep in our community up on the slide to just give an example of how the three of us have not only attended trainings, but also meetings and events in the community that make the City of Arcata a present partner in emergency preparedness. So part of ongoing efforts, taking advantage of resources and work being done by amazing groups and coalitions in the community. So where do we go from here and what are our next steps in terms of emergency preparedness? The first is city staff training. All full-time city of employee, City of Arcata employees are by definition of being public employees, disaster service workers. So we need to be trained to be able to do our duties. Incident command system training is available online through the FEMA Emergency Management Institute and Appendix B Staff Training Plan outlines that every City of Arcata employee will take the first two basic courses. Tabletop exercises in emergency response and emergency operations center activation. Appendix B to the EOP outlines that the City of Arcata will participate in one of these once every two to three years. So yes, exercises allow us to, a low-stakes environment to test our plans, identify gaps in them and areas for improvement. Increased support for Arcata CERT, so our Community Emergency Response Team is connected to the city through our police department. We have a staff liaison Sergeant Keith Altisar. And this is a group of trained community volunteers led by Judy Snyder, who can be activated by the city to assist in emergencies. There are two documents currently in the works that will help flesh out and structure this relationship between our PD and our CERT. The first is a standard operating procedure that will delineate how our team is activated and how they're supervised when they're activated. The second is Appendix D Volunteer Protocols, which will be drafted in partnership with our CERT. And this will go into not only our CERT members as volunteers themselves, but also spontaneous untrained volunteers that present themselves in disasters. And when our city and our PD may not have the capacity to organize these added hands that are untrained, this is where our CERT can really help up or step up and help us in disasters. So that will be drafted in partnership. And once these documents are complete, our CERT members will be sworn in as disaster service worker volunteers, which is a California Office of Emergency Services designation, which will allow them to operate in mutual aid situations outside of the Arcata city limits. And finally, Arcata Prepared. So this is just what we're terming our continued public engagement around emergency preparedness. I spoke about the webpage. I'm not sure if you've noticed the promotional banner hanging in the plaza, but it directs community members to the webpage where there are great resources as well as to Code RED sign-ups so that community members can receive the City of Arcata's emergency alerts in both English and Spanish. And then tabling, we've got a ton of great brochures sitting here in my office from the Redwood Coast Tsunami Work Group and all of these awesome partners we have, and we're really excited to pass those out when it comes time to be in person again. So finally, thank you all for your time. In closing, I think the three of us have come to see emergency prep not so much as a finish line to get to with these plans being presented and approved, but rather a continual process to keep building at, chipping away at, and your support and attention to emergency preparedness in the community as council members can go a really long way in that. Finally, a thank you to all of our partners in the planning process. Over the last year, we've had a lot of people review and look over these plans. Arcata CERT, we've had five members review these plans, Angelina Gregorio, Judy Snyder, Chris Murphy, Bob Brown and Darrell Chin. Huge thank you to all of you. You gave pages and pages of comments. Humboldt County DHHS, specifically Terrence McNally and Heather Muller, who helped us visualize what mass care and sheltering would look like here in Arcata. Humboldt State University and their emergency manager Christina Cozera, who allowed the three of us and our IT manager Dylan to tour the EOC setup that they have. The National Weather Service, Ryan Elward, Troy Naglini and Kathleen Zontos, who have been immensely generous with their time and expertise, and Ryan, who reviewed these plans. The Arcata Fire District, who are currently reviewing these plans. SHN and specifically Emergency Planner staffer, Ethan Lawton, who answered a lot of questions, and the Redwood Coast Tsunami Work Group for all the prep that they've done to prepare us here on the North Coast for that danger. And finally, the District English Learners Advisory Council, which allowed me and our translator Laura to present about Code RED, how important it is for our residents, especially Spanish-speaking residents in that Valley West area to be signed up for Code RED and about the Emergency Preparedness page that we've got up on the website. So thank you all for your time. Thank you so much to all of our partners in this process, and we look forward to continuing to deepen those relationships.
Great. Thank you so much for this report. I will now ask for questions from the councils, starting with councilmember Goldstein.
I don't have any questions, but thank you so much. I know this is huge amount of work, so thank you for the presentation and all of your work.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No questions. And again, thank you guys for all of your work on this and, you know, giving us a succinct and clear overview. So thank you.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
I don't have any questions, but definitely impressive work and thank you.
Vice Mayor Watson?
No questions. It was an outstanding presentation and I really appreciate all the work. Thank you.
Just one thing I want to add, just because I feel like we had, we did like run into each other at a lot of trainings. I just really want to give a lot of credit to our staff and to our team here. One, for recognizing that it's not just police that have a responsibility in emergency response, but it's multi-departments. It's a whole community approach, but even within the city, not just delegating it to one department, but recognizing different roles. And then also just really want to give a lot of credit to you all, I think for investing so much time in in training and being out at, you know, going to the different EOCs and, you know, Tracy, you know, was assigned to the COVID nineteen response in the planning section there and got really great experience there. I bring this up because I think Arcata is really leading the way in terms of the staff investment into emergency planning. And so I hope that what our our staff are doing here is really a model for what other cities can be doing in the county to be collaborating. And so I just really want to recognize that. I don't think you're going to toot your own horn, so I'm going to just do it for you and just say thank you because you have put an incredible amount of time and it shows. But I just wanted to contrast that with, I think Arcata really is leading the way in terms of the cities and this county working on emergency preparedness. So just want to recognize you and say thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Pereira.
Okay, well, let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
A reminder for Zoom attendees, if you wish to comment on this item, please use the hand, sorry, raise your hand function. There is no public comment, Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you all so much. Okay, so next we have on the agenda for new business, item C, consider introducing an ordinance regulating the operation of vacation rentals and limiting the total number allowed to one twenty-five. This is one that because there's been a room in my house that we've used, we've rented out through Airbnb. I will be recusing myself from this just so that there isn't any conflict of interest, of course. So I will be turning my screen off, stepping away and turning this over to Vice Mayor to run this agenda item. So thank you, and I'll see you soon.
Thank you, Mayor Pereira. Do we have a staff report?
Yeah, good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Before you tonight is ordinance fifteen fifteen forty-three, which is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcata implementing short-stay rental or short-stay and vacation rental ordinance. What we're recommending is that you receive the staff report and consider any public comment. And then there's an either or situation here. Either you can direct staff to reopen engagement efforts, and I'll explain a little bit more why we're making that as an optional recommendation and provide input on ordinance fifteen forty-three, which is attachment A to your staff report. Or if you feel comfortable with the ordinance as it is now or as you Or if you feel comfortable with the ordinance as it is now, or as you amended during this meeting, you can introduce the ordinance and continue this item to the February 3, 2021 meeting for adoption. So just a little bit of a general background. This ordinance was requested by the city council in 2018. And we went through extensive outreach and engagement efforts, took it to our economic development committee. Really had a lot of interaction with folks that are in the community that either, you know, have experience with vacation rentals in their neighborhood or more likely than not have a vacation rental. And so we're very engaged in this new regulatory framework the city was developing. The council originally requested that we develop this ordinance in order to get ahead of the potential for large scale conversion of residential units into this commercial purpose of renting it out for short stay accommodations. The council directed that we, you know, worked with the the community with the EDC to develop some parameters. And ultimately, we whittled down all of the different ideas to what's provided for you in attachment A, which we believe provides for a balanced approach, limiting the activity with a cap, but also allowing for, you know, the activity to to occur in the city of Arcata without getting overly onerous in terms of, you know, the requirements or our ability to manage and maintain those requirements. And so really the idea is that we would balance the impact on neighborhoods through a fairly simplistic model for regulatory framework that we would then be able to enforce on if there were bad actors. Ordinance 1543 is verbatim what was presented to the council in 2019 at that council meeting because of the composition of the council members, they realized that there wouldn't be enough votes to pass the ordinance. So instead of failing to pass the ordinance, we just held on it for a time. And then at your last council meeting, you asked if this ordinance come back for your consideration. And so that's why it's here tonight. I would like to walk through just some of the core components of ordinance 1543. So if you'll look at on packet page 388, where we get into the permit required, I'm going to walk you through some of the details here. Now, currently, you're required to get a business license. You're required to collect and remit transient occupancy tax to the city of Arcata. And that's the extent of the regulation, which is pretty minor and modest. This this regulatory framework under section 6302A creates a permitting process. And so we can issue a permit. And if we can issue a permit, we can also remove that permit. We have a revocation process. And so A really just creates the permit class. I'm going to jump to C, which really is the section that identifies the limit. The last council discussion on this topic landed on 125 as a limitation, which is approximately half a percent or so of the the current total number of units. And so that's that's an area, you know, each of these areas that I'm describing now will have, you know, some some council input on, you know, whether to maintain that previously discussed limitation or to have a policy discussion now and change those. Item D lists some exemptions. And so the exemptions are from the permit cap or from the the total number of vacation rentals. It's not an exception from the permit requirement. So you may fall under one of these exceptions, but you still have to go through the permitting process. And those two exceptions to the cap are really, if you're in a dwelling unit that is operated as a vacation rental for fewer than 30 days. So you take off once or twice a year and you rent your place out while you're gone. You wouldn't be subject to that limitation. They wouldn't count towards the 125 limitation, even though they'd still have to come in and get a permit. Or if the vacation rental unit is also occupied by either an owner or a tenant. So part of this regulation is really to ensure that our housing stock is retained in residential uses for long term residency. And so this exception excludes you from that cap if you have a long term residency occurring on the property, whether it's an owner occupied or tenant occupied. Section E was really a negotiation in the event that there are more than 125 operational at the time when this regulation is put into place. Section E provides for a grace period of sorts. Within the first six months after adoption of this regulation, anyone who's been operating as a vacation rental in the past 12 months can come in, document, document that to the city. Whether they were, you know, above board with the business license and the TOT or not, they can come in and seek a permit. If they don't file within that first six month period and there's more than 125 permits that are issued, they wouldn't be eligible for a permit at that initial stage. And the idea is that as each of these vacation rentals starts to, you know, as if they, if there are some closures, they stop operating as a vacation rental, start renting full time to, you know, to residents in the community, they would then be able to apply if that number of permits drops below 125. But they wouldn't be able to apply until such time that there was that that senescence. Item F, there's annual renewals. And so we're keeping track of these annually to make sure that we know how many permits are in play. Trying to keep that number about 125 or whatever the council decides. Next, in section 6303, the first item under A is the requirement for zoning clearance. This is about a $220 permit that's issued through my department where we verify that the use is an eligible activity and that the the site is being used for the purpose that it's zoned for. There was some discussion amongst folks in the community that they didn't feel like they should have to pay this fee. And so that's that's certainly something for the council's consideration, whether you want zoning clearances on those on these new life permits. Item B on the next page, 389, requires that they provide a contact, that there's contact information so that if there's a complaint in the neighborhood, instead of calling the APD first, Arcata Police Department first, that they call this contact and let them know, hey, there's this issue here. Part of the idea here is that, you know, if you develop a, you know, a bad actor through this, if they're, you know, they have people who aren't following, you know, municipal code or are causing, you know, problems in the neighborhood that require police response, that ultimately we can not reinstate their permit later if they don't qualify as operating in in good faith, in good standing, rather. Item C is a building official inspection. This came about, the council is wanted to make sure that all of these facilities were being rented, at least initially that they were, they met with health and safety requirements, that you didn't have occupants renting from, you know, from homes that were not designed for habitation or occupancy since we're issuing a permit for that use. And so that's about a $250 one time fee that happens at the beginning. We verified that the the building meets health and safety code. And then the permit reissuance. I mean, this is really a low barrier for reinstatement. If you've been operating in good standing, you know, you don't have those, you know, complaints against you, the city manager does the knee, determines that that whether that permit is active and in good standing and then can reissue them. Key part of this is that these aren't transferable. We didn't want to create a transferable permit that would be something of value that then people could trade on the market. This is a one off agreement with individuals who own vacation rentals that yes, you can use this structure for vacation rental. And so if you continue to operate, you demonstrate that you're paying your TOT, you have people staying there, and you're not a bad actor, we'll go ahead and have this low barrier reinstatement. If you're not using it, then we'll take it and give it to someone who wants to use it. And so we wouldn't reissue that. Or if you're a bad actor, we wouldn't reinstate. Moving down to section 6304, I'm not going to go through this in detail. This is really the stick end of the regulatory framework. If you're not operating according to the regulations or you have some other, you know, violations that you're creating, we can go through administrative enforcement remedies or judicial remedies. And we can, maybe these remedies are not exclusive, we can pursue multiple remedies. So that's, that's the meat and potatoes of what this regulatory framework does. If you were to implement this, it would establish a cap. Right now it's written as 125 plus those that would qualify as an exclusion from that cap. Everyone would need to get a permit. The permit would cost about $500 to issue on the front end. Each operating, currently operating vacation rental would have a seat at the table. Everyone would be able to come in for a permit, even if they go above the initial cap. And and that is the the effect of this ordinance. I will say that in, starting on packet page 392, we included the public comment that we received last time. I was reached out to by the Los Coast, a writer for the Los Coast Outpost today, Stephanie McQuerry. She put an article in Los Coast Outpost and I received seven emails from folks interested in this topic, but said they couldn't attend tonight. And so I did just want to circle back to this concept that there's an either or recommendation here. If you feel like you want to go out and get additional public comment, we know that there are people who are interested. And, you know, you want to take some time to digest that. Then we can bring it back. Or if you wanted to introduce it, it's ready for that discussion as well. If you have to answer any questions, I know that's a lot to digest. And I, there may be some public comment here tonight.
Thanks, David. Starting with Councilmember Goldstein, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
No questions at this time. Thanks.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
The only question I have is, I know it's about a $500 startup, but then the yearly fee for reissuring the permit, is it simply a business license or like what would be the annual cost?
The annual cost would be set in your fee resolution. And so we don't have a, we don't have a cost yet for that. It's something that would be fairly, again, this is a low barrier reinstatement. So it'd be fairly low effort. The administration needed to to process these. I can't imagine them costing more than, you know, the core fee for a business license as sort of a starting point to for discussions. So around $50 or so annually.
And my, I, I know there's already been a lot of work put into this. And so I think it's, it has been really well thought out. I like the fact that if it's a an occupied dwelling, then it does not count towards the cap. I think that's immediately what people would start to worry about seeing that number of 125. Doesn't really seem like a lot, but we do have a lot of owner occupied or tenant occupied dwellings that this wouldn't apply to. I mean, the fees would apply, but not the the cap. So I just want it to be clear that it's still a viable option for people to do this in their homes. My only concern would be if we move forward right now, well, we haven't, there probably is some public comment that we do need to still hear. And then also just the fees for right now, if we're talking about six months to have people come forward and and get going with it being COVID, I just hesitate towards that $500, which normally I would say is really reasonable for what is essentially a small business. Maybe just extending that timeout. I'm not sure how that would work.
I guess I would offer that the the zoning clearance may be, you know, a place to start. The health and safety inspection is probably more important than the zoning clearance. And, you know, the level of detail that we could give for most of these, you know, most vacation rentals are going to be in residential structures on residentially zoned properties. Those are, you know, fairly easy to to clear. There could be situations where, you know, we have to do additional research and you know, verify that a residential use is allowable on the property. So I guess I, you could make the zoning clearance discretionary, so to speak, if if it's clear that that it's on residential property, they wouldn't apply. And so only in those unique situations would we require zoning clearance. But I think based on some of the the units that we've seen listed for rent, you know, the health and safety inspection is probably a a wise step for us to take before issuing a permit. The director of engineering may have some insights into ways to streamline that fee as well. I know there's a hourly charge that the engineering are due for inspections as well.
I guess what I'm, I'm wondering if the question is more if there's a way to sort of delay certain points of implementation in terms of when the fees are due, you know, if we do, say in this first six months, kind of a clearance of bringing everybody in, but anybody that receives approval to have head income come in in that six month period. If the fees in the inspection, then, you know, kick in six months from now and, you know, perhaps the economy is is a little bit more up and running and people have a sense that they're going to return to utilizing, you know, their units for Airbnb if they pull them off right now. Is that more of kind of what you're asking about?
Yes, that that was. I'm just thinking if people are, you know, relying on some of that for income right now and just barely getting by, I wouldn't want to impose a 500, you know, an additional $500 on them. I think that's a reasonable price for operating a business, but just just delay that a little bit until we're out of this pandemic. That's really my main concern.
Yeah, I think, I think if we're going to issue a permit and then have to go through a revocation, if we find that it's doesn't meet with health and safety, that is, you know, probably, you know, kind of setting us up in a bad situation. So finding a way to reduce the cost, but still implement the program, I guess, is what I would recommend as a first starting place. You could theoretically extend out the the grace period so that if someone wanted to come in, you know, they're, they're not even renting right now. If they wanted to come in in 10 months or 12 months as opposed to, you know, the next six months. And then they have the operating capital, they know they've got a clear path. I know I'm going to be, you know, operational in the next three months or something like that. It might be easier to, you know, bite off the the $500 at that point or 250 if it's for the building inspection alone. So that's another way to do that. And if you'd like, we can put our heads together offline and maybe come back, you know, with some creative solutions to your next meeting.
Great. I, my comments are, I think it's a really important step we can take to protect our limited housing stock we have in the city. And it's probably something we need to do for a while. You know, I understand that there might be some changes we want to make to it. So I don't know, I would like to see us move something forward tonight. But if, you know, I don't know if we feel like that we can't just make recommendations to the staff and and move it forward or the council wants to bring it back. Can we, do we have any public comment?
We do have public comments. And for the other attendees that are on Zoom that may be interested in commenting on this item, just a reminder to use the raise your hand function. And the first public comment we have is using the attendee name Bob. And Bob, if you are able to begin, you will have two minutes, please.
Bob, can you unmute yourself? Maybe almost. So we're
On mute.
Perfect.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
This is, this is Bob Doran speaking. I want, I want to start out by saying this, it seems like this is designed for bad actors. We're not bad actors. We're a small business that operates. My wife and I are senior citizens. We use part of our house Airbnb and we don't make a whole lot of money at it. Right now, we're actually not opening, operating. We haven't been Right now, we're actually not open and operating. We haven't been operating since March last year because of COVID. So we haven't had any income in the entire year. Every year, we've been operating this for eight years. We've been paying money into the tax base through T O T. We pay it for a business license every year. And now you're saying, okay, after you've been doing this for so long, what, I, I just kind of jotting it down as we are, uh, on with David. It sounds like seven hundred and fifty dollars, five hundred dollars for a business license and two hundred and fifty dollars for an inspection. Like who, why do we have to have an inspection? All, all of a sudden, when we've been operating, no one's ever complained about anything we've done. You know, last time this came up, uh, you, it didn't go anywhere because so many people are, uh, are, well, so many council members were, uh, doing Airbnb themselves, just as your mayor does. And, you know, as a result, you didn't go anywhere. So, you know, now you brought it up. Last time you were doing it, it was the same day they were talking about money. How can we raise new money for the city to operate? This is the way they're going to be hitting us. My wife, my wife, my wife's saying, are we going to be grandfathered in on all this stuff? That's another question. Now, the inspection is not required for a rental. It's just a short-term rental. The, the place across the street is rent to a bunch of students. They don't have to have, have the, uh, the city come in and pay them to check out their place, you know? Why do we have that? And my, my basic problem is this is for, uh, a supposed problem with bad actors, but it's not really in, it's not really happening now. This is a, a reaction to what's happened in Trinidad, which is a totally different city than Sarkata. And it's not like, uh, you know, it's not like it's a problem. So why are we making a problem? And if it's just to, to raise more funds for the city, that's, I think, look out elsewhere than to this couple of senior citizens to try to make it.
You.
I don't know. Sorry. That's probably my two minutes.
Can we clarify if, I mean, I, I thought that if somebody's just using part of their residence, that this doesn't apply to them?
They would still be subject to, um, obtaining a permit, um, but they wouldn't be, they wouldn't count towards the cap. And, um, so to the question as to whether or not an existing, uh, use would be eligible, the answer is yes. You can, you can come in if you were an existing use. Uh, I think to, uh, the commenter's point about, um, not having been operating in twenty twenty, I think that section E under six three oh two could be amended to, uh, read that if you've had a vacation rental during the prior twelve month period or during twenty nineteen, you know, just to, to ensure that folks who have closed down over the last twelve months, you know, still have an opportunity to, to say, look, I, I intend to do this again when we're out of the pandemic.
It sounds like a reasonable, uh, change. Do we have any other public comment?
There is no other public comment for this item.
Thanks. All right. Do you have any, uh, any comments now from the council after public comment? Why don't you just go ahead and jump in there?
I just wanted to, I guess, add that I, I think that especially with three new council members, um, addressing this issue that is a past issue. Being new, I feel like I personally would like to take a little bit more time just to get myself in the understanding of this ordinance and get a little bit more into the public comment. Um, but I will also say, as a renter and as, um, somebody that has been looking for rentals in the one and two bedroom range, it is very, very hard in this community. And oftentimes a lot of these vacation rentals that exist are mother-in-law units that are one or two bedroom. And a lot of that housing that goes towards, you know, young professionals, serious students who are looking for a quiet, you know, on their own place. And that doesn't really exist in this rental market a lot of the time. And a lot of it is taken up by Airbnbs, um, and these short-stay rentals. So just kind of, just give a comment of where I'm sitting with this right now. So.
I think, um, my thought process really echoes council member Schaefer's, um, that, yeah, I mean, this is brand new to us. And as it said, it's come up in the past. Um, but I also, I, I do think this is really important because, um, yeah, I, I just fully agree with everything that you just said. Um, we, we miss out on a lot of, of opportunities for housing and we talk a lot about low-income housing, but also the just market rate, you know, housing, um, people struggle to find rentals here. And, um, while I'm super in support of somebody, you know, trying to supplement their income or start a small business, I also think that we need to make sure that all of our community members are housed, um, especially, you know, if they're just looking for a place, you know, a one-bedroom apartment, that should be available to, to our community. So this is definitely something I'm in support of.
And I think just to reiterate, it, it won't, it won't affect only the, the health and safety inspection. The initial fees will affect everybody, but we're not limiting the amount of, um, of people that can rent out their own space that they're in because we know a lot of people do do that. So we're not even limiting that. We're just talking about making sure that they are safe and up to code. And it's definitely not, um, about punishing anybody or, but I do think that, um, the public comment, um, there, there is a valid point of the fact that we don't have, or, or maybe we do. I'm new, so I just want to make sure the same type of inspections for rentals. I mean, I know that was something that the past council was talking about, developing is a system for making sure that our long-term rentals are up to code with the health and safety concerns.
Yeah. So that is a great question that was raised. Um, we do not currently have a rental code inspection program. It is a goal of the council and staff has prepared, uh, a draft program that is scheduled to come to you this fiscal year. Uh, it has also slowed and the council asked for, um, some, you know, kind of slowing of that process, obviously due to COVID nineteen. Uh, and we are continuing to try to, uh, work with the fire department because they do also have a, um, moderate code inspection, a fire code inspection of all, uh, rental units in Arcata. So we're really trying to see if there's a way that we could partner around that to reduce cost to the programs. But they would be inspecting for different things. So that'll be up to this council. We do not have a program in place, but it is a goal. And staff have put together a program for other rentals that will be coming to you for consideration only.
So it sounds like, I mean, to me, it's, it's if we, the, we have council members that like more time with this, um, I think that's reasonable. And, um, I'm just wondering what other input, what other, uh, I don't know, whatever, whatever, what other ideas we want to give, uh, Director Loya, so he can come back to us with, with some options. I know Councilmember Atkins Salazar had some thoughts on delaying, um, some of the initial costs. And, uh, and then I know, uh, David, you mentioned, um, I, I can't remember specifically what it was, but you, yeah, you mentioned something.
Yeah, section E, um, trying to extend out the, uh, timeframe for
Yeah.
when someone was operational.
Do you feel like you need anything else from us, David?
Uh, no, unless you want to weigh in on the, the total number. Um, if that's, you know, one twenty-five seems like the right number, then we're, we're golden. And I think I'll, I'll get together with Natra and we will, uh, you know, put, put together a couple of options on, um, implementation. A couple have come to me even as we've just been sitting here. So I think by the next, next meeting, if you want to bring it up next meeting, we'll have some, some fresh ideas.
Great. All right. Well, with that, um, should we take a, a short five-minute break while we wait for the, the mayor to return? All right. Five-minute break.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, hi, everyone. We are back from our break. So next we will move on to new business item D. Consider a salary adjustment for council members as provided under state law. If a salary adjustment is made, identify the amount of the salary increase in ordinance number 1541 and introduce ordinance number 1541 amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title II Administration, Chapter One, Council, Section 2010, salaries of the city council members. May have a staff report from Personnel Director DeMello. Nope, you're on mute.
I am, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. So just some background from you from the staff report. The salaries for City of Arcata council members are governed by California statute and are fairly restrictive in regards to the frequency and the amount in which salary adjustments can be made. And one of those requirements is that any adjustment in council salary can only be considered following an election when at least one new council member begins a new term. So essentially, the only opportunity to consider a salary adjustment is generally every two years. When eligible to consider a salary increase, the regulations also limit the amount of any increase to be a maximum of up to 5% for each full calendar year since the prior adjustment. The ability for the current salary adjustment consideration before you tonight is a result of the 2020 election. And it can be up to 5% for each full calendar year since the last increase. Based on when that last increase was, council may consider up to a 5% increase for one full calendar year, which would be for the calendar year of 2020. The current monthly salary for council members is $735.50. And for councils reference, a table has been included in your staff report. That reflects what the new monthly amount would be for full percentage amounts between a range between one and 5%. That would be allowed for the one year since the last increase. Those again are not hard examples. You can do portions of percentages, but we did it in the whole percentages for simplicity sake for you. And if council elects a salary increase prior to introducing the required ordinance to enact the adjustment, council will need to identify what that new monthly amount, dollar amount will be and the percentage amount it represents. So I am available to answer any questions if you might have them.
Great, thank you. We'll start with quest, any questions from council member Atkins Salazar?
I don't have any questions about this.
Council member Schaefer?
No questions at this time.
Council member Goldstein?
I have no questions.
Vice Mayor Watson?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, and I don't have any questions either. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment on this item.
Okay, well, I will bring this back to the council, see if there's any comments or discussion. I'll just go back down the line, council and Atkins Salazar, any thoughts to share?
My thoughts reflect what's in the materials based on the, the previous councils before us, their decision-making and why they chose to do the salary increase. And when I started running for council, I wasn't really aware of the salary or benefits that would go along with it. But as I was running and learning about that, and it was also, you know, during a time where we're really focusing on equity and getting more of a diversity in leadership. It became pretty apparent that you have to have a certain level of privilege to be able to serve in a position that we do. Because we're not making a ton of money on it. And I realize that it's a part-time job. But I think that if we want to have more equity and leadership, then it has to be a part-time job that is livable, so that if a person could have, you know, two part-time jobs, this being one of them and that being their, and then they could have a livable wage. I think that's the intent behind the increases. You know, I'm sure what we will probably get obviously pushed back on this because essentially we're increasing our own wages if we choose to do this, but I know that that's not really, that's not really the intention. It's the bigger picture and trying to provide equity and leadership and opportunities for a lot of other people as well.
Thank you, council member Schaefer.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that I do, I agree with council member Atkins Salazar in that making a, a wage competitive for the council is important to attract, you know, qualified candidates. I would like to comment, however, that I think a more modest increase, especially in the midst of a pandemic, when there are probably a lot of city officials that are not getting pay raises or, you know, not being laid off, et cetera. So I, I would probably state that I'm more in support of a wage increase similar to I'm looking at like the management. The comparison on the table here of about, of that two to 3% increase instead of that full 5%.
Council member Goldstein?
Um, yeah, I think that council member Atkins Salazar said it great. And I, yeah, I completely agree that, um, yeah, I started running and for city council and didn't really think about the money at all. And that takes a lot of privilege to be able to do that, especially because running itself is pretty expensive. And then, yeah, being on council is a pretty big time commitment and you, yeah, I have a lot of privilege to be able to be doing this. So I, I completely agree with that thinking. I'm not sure if this is necessary or not, but one thing that I had asked city manager Deemer earlier in the week to look into, and she did let me know that this is possible, is that if we don't feel that it's, if we want to take this opportunity, because we don't get the opportunity often to increase the city council salary for all the reasons we've talked about. Um, but we don't want to do it right now because of the pandemic. We can choose to do the increase, but push it off for, and for like a set date. Like we can say, this doesn't actually go into effect until January 2022 or whatever day we pick. I don't know if we feel that's necessary or not, but it was just a question that I had asked early in the week. And I wanted to let the rest of the council just know what my, what the answer was that I got back.
Vice Mayor Watson?
I don't know, I always have mixed feelings about these. Last time we did this, I believe I voted against giving us an increase for some of the reasons that we've talked about here. And, but, you know, I do agree that it's important to make the position as open as possible, as accessible as possible to as many people as possible. And I think that if we do do it, just looking at the difference in cost and everything, that we should just go ahead and do the entire 5%. My takeaway from the public is that they think we are full time, we get paid full time salaries, which we all know that we don't. And, uh, you know, an increase of $40 a month, the $772 a month. I think a lot of people would still feel like we're underpaid. And, you know, yeah, I see the comparison with staff. We're in a totally different category where we get paid significantly less than these, than these numbers. Yeah, than the staff that these numbers reflect. And so those are my feelings is I, I think, you know, I would also be open if we wanted to put it off. It wouldn't bother me, but I think if we do do it, we should just go ahead and do the entire 5%.
I, I don't have anything different to add. I think much of the conversation around equity and access to leadership has already been touched on. So what I'll do is open this up for, I guess, a, a motion from, from the council and we can go from there.
While people are deliberating, one other question that was asked of me of a council member was, you know, kind of what does that equate to in an, in an hourly wage? And, you know, even with the 5% increase, I know that many of you put in more than 20 hours a week. But even at 20 hours a week, it's about $8.90 an hour. So still far below minimum wage. And I know that many of you put in more than, so when you see your pay stubs, because you're reflected as full-time employees for the city as a council elected position, you know, your pay stub probably reveals of about $4.30 an hour right now. So I mean, of course, it all just depends on what you divide the number by, but I think, you know, I've never seen a council put in less than 20 hours a week working for the city of Arcata on average.
Well, and just looking at the numbers, if we're talking about $37 a month for the five of us, that's about $185. Given the budget of the city, it doesn't seem like that's an unreasonable request even during a pandemic. So my instinct is just to push forward with it unless as a city manager or payroll, if you think that, you know, we shouldn't, it's not prudent right now. You know, I'm open to that as well.
So I'll, I'll make an attempt at making a motion here. I move that we introduce, let me see, excuse me. Did you do, yeah, introduce ordinance number 1541 amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title II Administration, Chapter One, Council, Section 2010, salaries of the city council members. And to reflect a 5% increase.
I will second that.
Oh, I, I think we need to also identify in addition to the percentage would be the dollar amount. For the 5%, that new dollar amount would be $772.28.
Right, so 5% increase to $772.28.
And wave reading of the text consent to read by title only, otherwise the ordinance, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I didn't see it here. And wave reading of the text and consent by, yeah, consent by title only.
I will still second that.
Okay, great, so I'll call the vote by roll call, council member Atkins Salazar.
Hi.
Council member Schaefer?
Hi.
Council member Goldstein?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Hi.
I vote I as well, motion passes. Thank you, and now we will move on to our second oral and written communications period. This time is provided for people to address the council on matters not on tonight's agenda. Please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press star nine now if you are on a phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes. When it is your time to, for public comment, the clerk will unmute you and invite you to speak. Do we have any public comment?
Looking for public comment. And we do not have any public comment.
Okay, next we'll move to council and staff reports. Are there any staff updates?
There are no additional staff updates tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watson?
I don't have anything to report this evening, thank you.
Council member Schaefer?
Uh, nothing to report right now, thank you.
Council member Goldstein?
Uh, nothing to report, thanks.
Council member Atkins Salazar?
Nothing to report as well, thank you.
And I don't have a report this evening. Dates of future meetings, we do have a study session tomorrow night at 6:00 PM via teleconference. So we'll see each other tomorrow. And before we adjourn, I wanted to take a moment because I'd like for us to adjourn the city council meeting in memory of Esteban Gonzalez, who his life was shortened due to pneumonia and possibly complications from COVID-19. Most of us have known Esteban for many years. He worked tirelessly, had such an uplifting spirit. And it's really been a devastating loss for this community. And just so much gratitude to his family for sharing Esteban with all of us for so many years. And just really want to extend our condolences to his family and those that were closest to him. So maybe just adjourn in, in his memory. So thank you, everyone.